Hafadee, good afternoon. This confirmation hearing is conducted by the Committee on Land, Environment, Housing, Agriculture, Parks and Infrastructure. It's called to order at 2 o'clock PM. And today's date is Monday, February 24th, 2025. Notice of today's hearings was disseminated to all local media outlets on February 17th, 2025, with a second notice provided on February 22nd, 2025. Notice on the hearing was also made available and known on the Guam Legislature's website and the government of Guam Public Portal Notice, Public Notice Portal. This afternoon, we'll be hearing testimony on the appointments of Ms. Fabrine Cruz-Raspicio, Mr. Joseph F. Artero Cameron, and Mr. Jeremy J. Rojas, all as members of the Chamorro Land Trust Committee for a term of three years from the date of confirmation. I would like to welcome my colleagues joining us here today. To my right is my vice chair, Senator Duñez, Senator Chalahi, Senator Lohan, Senator Gumatautau, and Senator Borja. Before we begin, before we begin, I would like to go over the general rules of conduct. Individuals testifying shall first be recognized by the chair before speaking and shall state their name for record-keeping purposes. Questions and testimony shall be confined to the substance or nature of the agenda. Personal interference as to the motive or character of any senator or any individual testifying is not permitted. The chairperson of the committee may order the removal from a hearing any member of the legislature who fails to observe proper decorum pursuant to the 38 Guam Legislature's standing rules. Any violation of this rule of conduct will result in the removal. We will now proceed to the confirmation hearing on these three appointments, and I'd like to begin on calling upon those who wish to speak on their behalf first that would be providing oral testimony. Mr. Earl Garrido. Dominique Rose Felix. And would anybody else be providing oral testimony? Mr. Mindiola, please. Conchita, please. Again, I ask you just to please state your name for the record and also who you're here to testify or provide testimony for, okay? Ms. Conchita, we'll start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Vice Speaker. Thank you for this opportunity to express my support of Joseph Artero Cameron's nomination to the CLTC. I'm, I am in support of Mr. Cameron's nomination to the CLTC and who, who in Guam doesn't know Joseph Cameron? I mean, he's either your primo, pari, chetlue, and on occasion, your nanny, okay? That's, that's Joseph. However, my support comes from the perspective of a mother, an anna, okay? And an advocate for my adult child with disabilities, a proud, who is a proud graduate of Simon Sanchez High School. I have had the privilege of witnessing Mr. Cameron's exceptional dedication, compassion, and impact in his role at the Guam Department of Vocational Rehabilitation, DVR. Mr. Cameron's commitment to recognizing and nurturing the potential of individuals with disabilities is, is evident in his consistent efforts to provide them with opportunities for meaningful professional growth, employment, and community involvement. His approach has always been empowering, focusing on ability rather than limitation, significantly advancing the lives of many special individuals who learn differently, including my child. Through his work at DVR, Mr. Cameron has demonstrated an outstanding ability to see beyond the present challenges to the long-term contributions individuals can make to their community. So how, senators, how does this role, you're probably asking, how does this relate to his nomination? This perspective, I believe, is crucial for his role on the CLTC because it aligns with their mission to manage and administer the use of land for the betterment of the people of Guam. Mr. Cameron's role at DVR involves thoughtful stewardship and innovative leadership to ensure that individuals who learn differently could achieve their career and personal goals and become productive, contributing members of society. And I might also add that Mr. Cameron follows the rules. He follows the letter of the law. And if there's ever a gray area, like in his role in DVR, he will coordinate with his federal counterparts. So he is above board. Again, how does this relate to his nomination? Well, his experience of DVR gives him a unique understanding of leveraging limited resources to maximize community benefits, which is an essential skill for any CLTC member. Mr. Cameron's transferable skills, proven track record of leadership in both, and I might add, both Republican and Democrat administrations, and compassionate outreach and vision will significantly contribute to the CLTC's goals. His commitment to community growth will advance the commission's initiatives and Guam's people. I am confident that Mr. Cameron will continue his work with the same level of excellence and commitment he has shown at DVR. Thank you for considering my input on Mr. Cameron's nomination from the perspective of a mother whose child learns differently. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tytenol. Mr. Garrido.
Hafadee Vice Speaker Ada and the esteemed members of the 38th Guam Legislature. My name is Earl J. Garrido. I serve as a commissioner of the Chamorro Land Trust Commission. I'm also here in my personal capacity as a dedicated resident of Guam. Today, I wish to share my thoughts on the nominations of Ms. Fabrindin Raspicio, Mr. Joseph Cameron, and Mr. Jeremy Rojas. These nominees altogether bring a wealth of skills, professional expertise, and valuable community experience to the table. The CLTC functions as a humanitarian outreach program of our government, aimed at uplifting the people of Guam through initiatives such as facilitating homeownership and promoting subsistence farming. We currently face the significant challenges of addressing and remediating the missteps of the past. As we navigate these challenges, we are committed to carefully investigate each issue and applying the necessary solutions based on our laws and the CLTC mandates. In conclusion, I urge this esteemed body of the 38th Guam Legislature to confirm the nominees promptly. Once confirmed, I look forward to collaborating with them to tackle the issues facing the CLTC and serve our community effectively. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Garrido. Mr. McDowell.
Thank you very much. It's kind of hard. These people are, look good doing it, and they are so eloquent, the way they speak. Wow. I'm, I'm here in support of Fab Cruz-Raspicio for board membership on the Chamorro Land Trust. My name is Monty McDowell. I'm the principal broker of advanced management and chairman of the Guam Association of Realtors' Government Affairs Committee. Today, I stand before you to express my enthusiastic support for the appointment of Mrs. Raspicio to serve as a board member of the Chamorro Land Trust Commission for a term of three years. Mrs. Raspicio, exemplary educational background and her extensive professional experience uniquely qualifies her for the position. She graduated from Notre Dame High School in Talafoco in 1982 and later earned a Bachelor of Science in Business Administration, majoring in marketing and management information systems from Creighton University in 1991. Her commitment to continuous learning is further evidenced by her Master of Science in Management with a focus on international management from Troy State University, along with additional economic coursework at Oxford University, England. Professionally, Mrs. Raspicio has demonstrated consistent leadership and a deep commitment to our community since November 2022. She has been a principal broker at Blue Continent Realty and Development LLC. Her role as managing director for Pacific Consulting Group since August 2021 showcases her strategic thinking and management capabilities. Her previous position in real estate, including roles at Home Ventures Realty and Century 21 Commonwealth Management, reflect her comprehensive understanding of real estate and land management, a critical aspect for any member of the Chamorro Land Trust Commission. Mrs. Raspicio's involvement extends beyond professional commitments. She has been an active participant in numerous organizations, including the National Association of Realtors, the Guam Association of Realtors, where she serves as board, she serves on the Board of Directors as a member of the Government Affairs Committee. Her past role in the Guam Medical Association and the American College of Healthcare Executives highlight her inter, easy for me to say, interdisciplinary approach and her capacity to bridge diverse sectors for the betterment of our island. Her service as treasurer and international liaison for the American College of Healthcare Executives demonstrates her strong financial stewardship and her ability to foster international relationship, skills that are invaluable to the Chamorro Land Trust Commission. In conclusion, Mrs. Raspicio, diverse background in real estate, health management, and her proven track record of service and leadership equipped her to significantly contribute to the Chamorro Land Trust Commission. Her appointment would not only be a step forward in enhancing the mission of the Commission, but also in ensuring that the Chamorro Land Trust continues to serve our community effectively. I urge you to confirm her appointment, allowing her the opportunity to bring her dedication, expertise, and perspective to the Chamorro Land Trust Commission. Thank you for considering this testament to Mrs. Raspicio's qualifications and my unreserved recommendation. Jesus Mahashay.
Thank you, Mr. McDowell. I'd like to recognize my colleagues, Senator Barnett and Senator Serena Salas-Metanani. Thank you for joining us this afternoon. Ms. Felix.
Hafadee, I'm Dominique Rose Felix Leon Guerrero, and I'm here to offer mine and the full endorsement, mine along with my father, Christopher Felix, along with Clara Delgado. If I may, I would like to read both of their letters and share my testimony after. Dear Vice Speaker, this is from Christopher Felix. I am writing you my recommendation of Fabrine Raspicio for her appointment to the Chamorro Land Trust Commission. Unfortunately, due to travels, I am unable to make the February 24th public hearing. I have known Fabrine for the past 15 years and have worked with her in real estate transactions for the past 10 years. She's a personal friend as well as a colleague. I have found her to be very intelligent and at the same time caring. Her knowledge for real estate principles and practices are very high, and she has a true understanding and respect for the Chamorro traditions and love of the land as well as the culture. I highly recommend you and your esteemed colleagues to approve of her nomination. I am sure you and the Chamorro Land Trust Commission will be pleased with her knowledge and dedication. Sincerely, Christopher Felix. Hafadee Vice Speaker Ada, I am writing to offer my full endorsement of Fabrine Raspicio for the appointment as a member to the Chamorro Land Trust Commission. Having worked closely with Fabrine since 2018 in various professional capacities, I can confidently say that she possesses all the skills, experience, and dedication needed to make valuable contributions to this commission. Fabrine has consistently demonstrated outstanding leadership and problem-solving abilities, especially in situations that required critical thinking and collaboration. There are many situations that she handled professionally and ethically while working with me at Century 21 Commonwealth Realty as a new licensee, and then when she transferred over to my new company at Home Ventures Realty. I knew with her skill set and common sense that it was a matter of time that she would branch out on her own. Fabrine also serves with me on the Board of Directors for the Guam Association of Realtors and committee member for the GARD Government Affairs Committee. Her input has been valuable and has helped provide endorsements to critical legislations. Fabrine is indeed an asset in any position she holds. Fabrine brings a wealth of knowledge in real estate, along with a deep commitment to effectively administering use of Chamorro lands to benefit the people of Guam. In addition to her technical expertise, Fabrine has excellent communication skills, an open-minded approach to teamwork, and a strong ability to listen and engage with diverse perspectives, traits that are essentially for success in any setting. I have also known her to have a strong moral compass that guides her decision-making. Her strong familial ties and upbringing add to her character. What sets Fabrine apart is her unwavering professionalism, strategic mindset, and tireless work ethic. She consistently goes above and beyond in every project and is always willing to collaborate for the greater good. I have no doubt that her appointment to this commission will be a tremendous asset to the task at hand. I wholeheartedly recommend Fabrine for the Chamorro Land Trust Commission appointment and firmly believe she will excel in this role. If you require any further information, please do not hesitate to reach out to me. Thank you for considering this recommendation. I am confident that Fabrine will exceed your expectations as a commissioner in the Chamorro Land Trust Commission. Sinceramente, Clara Delgado. I myself second everything everybody has said about my auntie Fab. She has, we are, I'm her niece-in-law, she's my auntie-in-law, and we have grown so much together personally and professionally, and I'm very proud to give my full recommendation for her to be on the Chamorro Land Trust Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Felix Leon Guerrero. Mr. Mindiola.
Jesse Mindiola, I'm just here as a concerned, I'm not a concerned citizen, but a citizen. I want to, I want to speak, a lot of these individuals here have said a lot of great things about Fabrine, but I have personal experience with Fabrine. About five years ago, I met Fabrine for the first time. My wife and I embarked on a journey to buy our first home, and which is something typically a stressful endeavor one, one takes on. And we were told through, by many people, to be sure that we have an excellent realtor, a realtor that has our best interests at heart, a realtor that works and has integrity. And we were referred to, Fabrine was referred to us by a family member. So we began the process of that journey of purchasing a home. And I got to tell you, I don't know what everybody was talking about. It was so seamless. Fabrine made the process of purchasing a home and going through the whole six months so smooth. She displays so much integrity, so much desire, and so much passion that I wasn't a client when she was dealing with me. I was like family. And since those five years, Fabrine and I have stayed in communication. I have referred other individuals to her as well, because that's, that's what you do, right? When you come across somebody who's excellent at their job, you continue to push them along further and refer other individuals to her. So I'm here in full support of Fabrine because she allowed my wife and I to have that dream, quote-unquote, "the American dream," and she aided us in purchasing our very first home. And it's certainly not going to be the last time we utilize Fabrine. So I hope that you guys can see what I see and that she would be the best fit for the people of Guam. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mindiola. Sir, are you providing testimony? Just press the button.
Yeah, my name's Isaac Berg. I'm here to provide testimony in support of Joseph Cameron. Okay? So I'm reading this letter on behalf of Dr. Nathaniel Berg, my father. So here goes. Vice Speaker Ada and members of the Commission, I'm writing to express my wholehearted support for the nomination of my very good friend, Joseph F. Artero Cameron, to serve as a member of the Chamorro Land Trust Commission. I have known Joseph for nearly 30 years, over which time I have seen his commitment to the well-being of our community. It has been nothing short of extraordinary. The Chamorro Land Trust Commission is charged with a vital responsibility, the disposition of Chamorro homelands, public lands reserved to advance the social, cultural, and economic development of the Chamorro people. The Commission works diligently to distribute residential, agricultural, and commercial lands and to provide economic assistance programs to not only preserve Chamorro cultural heritage, but also to promote sustainable community development. The Commission's mandate to facilitate land use for the highest, the, the Commission's mandate is to facilitate land use for the highest and best use. I firmly believe Joseph is ideally qualified to contribute in this role. Joseph has served in a large number of capacities within the government of Guam, providing him the widest variety of experiences that will surely enhance his service with the Chamorro Land Trust Commission. There are simply too many positions to list. However, I feel it is worth mentioning his having been the executive director for both the Guam Council of Arts and Humanities and the Hagatnia Restoration of Redevelopment Authority. He served as a board member and was elected chairperson of the Pacific Islands Museum Association. He has even served as the director of the Guam Public Library System. Each of these roles is a testament to his passion for preserving and advancing Guam's cultural heritage and his unwavering commitment to serving the people of Guam. I first met Joseph shortly after I began running Guam Radiology Consultants. Recognizing my desire to get back to the community that had given me so much, a friend told me he would introduce me to Joseph. He arrived at my office later the same day. At that time, he was director of the Department of Integrated Services for Individuals with Disabilities. He carried out his position with DISID with remarkable dedication. I later came to understand that Joseph knows no other way. He identified two DISID clients and was not going to stop until he found a way to fulfill the mandate of the department. He took it upon himself to ensure that these two individuals, one, a woman with profound hearing loss, a non-English speaker who had never previously held a job; the other DISID client being a gentleman who had lost his vision after a distinguished career in photography. Joseph found a way to ensure that they both found meaningful employment at our organization. His nearly daily visits to my office, his promising and delivering ongoing support, training our staff, and his unwavering determination ensure that these individuals not only became productive members of our team, but also gained a true sense of belonging. My observation of Joseph's actions extend beyond a single act of kindness while serving the public. His leadership inspired our facility and indeed other local medical establishments. He helped them see that they could pursue hiring practices that embrace those who face formidable challenges in finding employment. Moreover, his consistent advocacy for public recognition of the abilities of those often overlooked has served as a catalyst for positive change in our community. The experience of working with Joseph while he was director of DISID was exemplary of everything I saw him do for the people of Guam, after he completed his mission of finding employment for those whom others thought were unemployable. On a personal note, I have also witnessed Joseph's dedication to caring for his own family. His loving commitment as a caregiver to his strong-willed mother, Ms. Maria Artero Cameron, exemplifies the values of respect, responsibility, and compassion that are at the heart of Chamorro culture. How Joseph cares for his mom reflects the warmth, generosity, and personal integrity that he shows in every aspect of his work and life. Joseph Artero Cameron embodies the qualities of a true community leader. He is dedicated, innovative, and compassionate. His proven track record of supporting the most vulnerable members of our society, coupled with his deep respect for our cultural heritage and intimate understanding of Guam's history, make him an ideal candidate for the Chamorro Land Trust Commission. I'm confident that his contributions will further enhance the Commission's mission to restore and advance the Chamorro homelands for the benefit of our people. Thank you for considering my good friend's nomination. I'm happy to provide any further information or answer any questions you might have regarding his qualifications. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I believe there's anyone else that wants to testify? Mr. Canat, please.
Okay. Buenos dias para ambos todos. Si deben quitarles el mago haga en el show Chamorro. Zama lago na barabé fanae testimonio. Sa kalanana manmano estisia imanma punta. Tiutungu i dos ni mala punta. In fact, ni tiutungu na parapofan mahungo pa'go i junior appointment or confirmation. Pues kalanai de jine ngango ni amoli ni na kuman to semense, Mr. Cameron. Down the line man intingo hami genashona. Kalantodu tumungo na ezige mas importante para hami ni hagas tumatsuji este Chamorro Land Trust. So in consideration, I would like to, I'll revert to the second, my second language, which is English. I have to tell you that I absolutely, if this was a competition on popularity and wonderfulness and salesmanship, we have a great team. Joseph Cameron is, I love dearly. He's very compassionate, and he's very good at the work he does. I wish he was still at Chamorro Affairs, but in all the work that he's done, he's been, you know, an outstanding man. And it kind of pains me to be here today to testify against all of these folks' appointments. They're all wonderful people. None of them have any real knowledge of the Chamorro Land Trust, except the concept. And now we also have two realtors, which is probably what brings me the biggest fear. We've had no problem selling Chamorro Land Trust. Apparently, we sell it all over the place and we get nothing for the actual recipients who's requalified, that stood in line in December of 1995, when this law was enacted, yeah? After it was many years prior to that, when it was introduced by the good and fine gentleman, Uncle Paul Bredalio, okay? And many others along them. The Chamorro Land Trust is in very sad shape. We're at number six of the nearly 60,000 applicants, number six, mind you. And apparently, everybody overlooks the one, the terminology that talks about prior occupancy, which was very much addressed in the enactment of the Chamorro Land Trust. People have been moved off their properties by some very unscrupulous directors and employees of the Chamorro Land Trust, and we all know this. The Chamorro Land Trust has been raided and stolen from, and we still have no criminal convictions, although maybe a good audit would bring forth one. But we are not, this is not news. It's, in fact, it was reported by, and listened to by the community. As we discussed, the misappropriation of funds that was due, that was owed to the Chamorro Land Trust by its direct directors for irresponsible trips to the Philippines and these great accommodations of a stipend and the paycheck and the hotel and all the, everything, under God's green earth, while there was no action going on at the Chamorro Land Trust. What I am saying is we need people who are not as committed to their jobs as, you know, and I'm, I don't, I did not say that right, who weren't so good at what they are doing right now, that it almost seems like punishment to throw them into a very important commission that actually is for the saving of our community members who are living in squalor because of the misappropriations. And then to throw in these new, these new nominees who don't have the institutional knowledge of the, even the very, very basic intent of the Chamorro Land Trust, and that is to provide land for people to live on, even if it means building a lean-to, and many have, to the detriment of their children with no water and no power. Which brings me right back to the abuse that has been ongoing for way too long at the Chamorro Land Trust. It was once said that what we need at the Chamorro Land Trust, and I'm not, I don't remember who said it, it may have been an elder who said, "We need our best and brightest and most committed." Those who have no, who are humble and Christian-like people with no special interests to enrich themselves. It's been very sad. I sat five hours at my house listening to a bill that was called by your committee, 638. It was totally, it was shocking to hear the testimony that was coming out of the main person who was seeking this prime property next to DVR to DISID. When the gentleman said he didn't go to the Chamorro Land Trust because the good senator who introduced this legislation had pulled him to the side when they ran into each other and told him that he had a place for him. The man wasn't even looking for office space for the Special Olympics, which happens one time a year, okay? So that will tell you how some of our most trusted feel about the Chamorro Land Trust. It's their own personal little piggy bank, for some warped reason. We've lost, we have, we're bleeding money. That we're losing funds everywhere we turn, and it seems that the intent, which was supposed to be GITA's obligation, to utilize our commercial leasing for the betterment, to make money for the Commission so that they could fulfill their main obligation, which is to provide land that is surveyed and provided with infrastructure at some point so they could raise their families. And we wouldn't have this big, major housing crisis where people have to choose between food and their rent, because the cost of living out there is absolutely ridiculous. So I will go back to what I came for. I cannot, in all good conscience, support the nomination of the three nominees. And it has nothing to do with all of their expertise and all the great testimony that is given on their behalf. I don't doubt that they're awesome people, but I think we're looking beyond awesome. I think we're looking beyond nice. We're looking upon serious, committed commissioners to get this program on its feet while we still have a distinct possibility of keeping, saving from the further brain drain and the terrible living conditions of some of our most vulnerable and those, and our future. Please consider this when you go to consider these nominations that are being put forth. Si juzmasi, ugagago hamzoo, put fa bot. Kun sudera ifamagun famagunta. Ga'yesi nisia, zana hallum edusia iman kapasta sinha man na'i ni temponia ni man esesita este na programa. Put fa bot ugagago ha, den parage if, den ifamagunta. Teni manam ko ta e mania na'ta sia. Si juzmasi, presdenada, nando onra niun na'yo parapekuntu sia amzo. Si juzmasi.
Thank you, Director Bredalio.
Thank you, Vice Speaker, Honorable Senator Toldiana and Honorable Senators of 38 Guam Legislature. My name is Fred Bredalio Jr., currently the Director of Department of Corrections, former Director of Veterans Affairs, and former and retired Chief of Police of the Guam Police Department. It gives me great pleasure to provide testimony and support of Joseph Artero Cameron as a member of the Chamorro Land Trust Commission. I've sent a written testimony to your office, and that could be read in the record. Rarely, sometimes do I ever go before the legislature on requests to provide endorsements or support, and when it comes down to nominations. I've been through this legislature, I've been at the legislature and testified against nominees, but I provide my trust. I've worked with Mr. Cameron in a previous administration. I know he has the, my trust that he has the commitment to make the right decisions as a member of the Chamorro Land Trust Commission. I believe that he has that dedication of honorable public service, and I think one of the biggest elements for an individual to serve in the capacity of a member of the Chamorro Land Trust Commission is a knowledge of what that commission does and the origin of it from my Uncle Paul Bredalio and from Uncle Ricky, and even the late Angel Santos on what they envisioned in terms of what the purpose and mission of the Land Trust was for. And I just want to just say briefly, you know, as a, with all the positions I've had in government in terms of the integrity and the kind of serious decisions that the members of the Commission have to make, I believe that Joseph Artero Cameron can make those kind of decisions and be very deliberate before that commission when issues come before it that requires really looking at and studying what is being proposed before the commission and what vote needs to be made. Thank you. Si juzmasi.
Thank you, Director Bredalio. Acting Director Gumboa.
I'm the Vice Speaker and Senators of the Legislature. My name is Roy Gumboa, Deputy Director, Department of Agriculture, Detail to the Chamorro Land Trust. I'd like to celebrate getting through my first day today at the office, settling in, meeting with the staff. There's not much else I can say that that's already been said about the three individuals that have been nominated. I believe Jeremy and I went to high school together. I've known Fabrina in the, in the social world. And Mr. Joseph Cameron, I think I've probably mugging him a couple of times at a couple of different events. Like you, when people step up to assume a leadership position, it's not an easy response walking into things you may only have a little knowledge of. But when approached with the opportunity to work in such a, such an important role, you've got to give it a hundred and, 110%. Dive deep, look at what's within your heart, and make sure you put the best foot forward, make sure you put the best effort to align yourself with the mission of the Chamorro Land Trust. The three could be any different names, but when looking at their resumes, yes, they come with a wealth of knowledge. What I'm looking forward to is working with them so we can progress, we can progress and fulfill the mission of the Chamorro Land Trust. I tend to lead often with my heart because I know that our people can take advantage of these lands that are made available. I know that there have been many challenges to our islanders when it comes to affording houses, when it comes to, like Ms. Debbie said, choosing rent or choosing to feed your family. While those are some of the things that are outside of our controls, what I think we need to do is work with these nominees, get them confirmed so we can get back to the business of finishing and completing and working along that mission of the Chamorro Land Trust so that the greater of our people can benefit from what is absolutely needed out in our community. Coming from the Department of Agriculture side, I see the importance of these agricultural leases so that in the future, should we be faced with any other challenge to our island, either pandemic or shortages or increases in supplies coming into the island, with the agricultural leases ensuring that they have all the tools to succeed, we can better be able to provide for our, for our people, better be provided for our families through these agricultural leases. In situations where we're looking at some of these leases that have maybe encroached a little bit into going outside of the boundaries, we're looking at other solutions, possible solutions to still make sure they're compliant with the Chamorro Land Trust mandates and so on and so forth. And Ms. Debbie alluded to some of the misappropriations in the past and things like that. I tend to agree that before any administrator or director wants arbitrarily just say, "Hey, I'm going to take a trip because I want to learn this," should be put in front of the board. Make sure that there is justification for a so-called trip or whatever it may be, but everything we need to learn from, we can find it on the internet. We can make a Zoom call or a Teams call and communicate in that fashion. No administrator should arbitrarily be given the power to make any executive decision, which has created a lot of the problems in the past. So looking forward, there's that system of checks and balances between the administrator and the board, and hopefully with, of course, with a lot of their expertise and knowledge that they bring from their work experience, it'll be a great process moving forward, trying to be able to award as many of the leases to our people as possible. And in doing so, in a quicker fashion, that makes sure that everybody and everyone is as happy as can be. We know some of the issues that are, that we face today can be very challenging. They grab headlines, and that's totally fine. One of the things that I learned a long time ago is that we can't please everyone. Even, you know, I learned this, and this is something that was mentioned to me, even Jesus couldn't please everybody. So what makes me think I would be special to try to satisfy everyone with their needs? We've just got to make sure that the decisions that is made between the administrator and the, and the Commission are what benefits the people greatly. And I'm looking forward to their nominations moving forward and so we can get back, basically so we can get back to work as quickly as possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Director Gumboa. Mr. Herrera.
Buenos dias, Vice Speaker. Na onnu zani komitea prey esti na komision, donkuna si juzmasi. In onnu si David Herrera, ginni na komisioner zu gi umbray, za amolic na bulay gini man motu ni no realtor na no budet, za parabe ti stigu loqui, presti tres na kilazonu si zone Cameron, where si she order respishus and si, si not rohas. Es befinu English, prezi ti komuprendi finu hilatna nota. Hafadee Vice Speaker, Members of the Committee on Land, Environmental Housing, Agriculture, Parks, and Infrastructure, my name is David Bobalta Herrera, and I'm advocate to propel the Chamorro Land Trust to become an autonomous agency to support the estimated sixty thousand-plus beneficiaries. It is a blessing to see several volunteers appear before the 38 Guam Legislature to contribute their time, energy, and expertise in real property to implement the Chamorro Land Trust program in accordance with Public Law 12-226, Chapter 75A, 18Gar, Public Law 2218, and other interrelated regulatory bodies. We, the advocates for the Chamorro Land Trust Commission, are thankful for the progress that the 37 Guam Legislature have accomplished to resolve the thirty-year dilemma that started in November of 1995, when the first come, first served applicants lined up and paid their fifty-dollar application fee. That being said, for the record, the first come, first served process froze in applicant number six since 1995. Today, over 2,800 residence, residential and agricultural leases were ratified. Question I had when I got on board the Chamorro Land Trust as a Commissioner three years ago in February of 2022 was how can this be? How can you have first come, first served? You have about 10,000 applicants, and then you have 2,800 leases, but you're stuck at applicant number six? That was the big question. And that was since back in, it was collected since November and December of 1995. But the question remains today. How can that happen when the law was first come, first served? So to answer, the answer from the staff and management was, well, that's how it was since 1995, under the governors of Gutierrez Comacho-Cavu Administration, and now with the current administration. So for the past thirty years, we have bypassed the applicant number six, who is now deceased, and have listed her grandchild as a beneficiary, who was not part of the law of Successship and Chamorro Land and CLTC ratified over 2,800 residential and agricultural leases for those leases. We had, out of the 2,800 leases, we identified 223 ratified leases that were on properties under unregistered land, and some are under the Ancestral Lands Commission. So the question here that we shall focus on is that how can that be? How can you have 2,800 leases? And then 223, we have justified that while I was there in the Commission. 223 were on unregistered land, and some of them are under the Ancestral Lands Commission. Anyway, and many of these beneficiaries who have leases on unregistered lands have mortgages under the SBA, mortgages under the VA, and mortgages under the Guam Housing Corporation. So even with that, even with a senior realtor and a banker in the Commission, these facts are now here to face us head-on, because when Typhoon Ma'war hit in 2023 and devastated the island, and the beneficiaries were knocking on the doors of the Chamorro Land Trust Commission, and when we were assessing the record files of past mortgages that totaled over several million dollars, and CLTC did not have the money in the account to guarantee any more mortgages that were being applied with the SBA for those that have had their homes that were severely or totally damaged. Now, these applicants applied for the SBA. They were approved, and they were approved for up to $250,000 or more, but the SBA required a collateral or a loan guarantee note. What we at the CLTC, what are we at the CLTC to do in good faith to assist these beneficiaries that are in need to shelter their children and elders from the inclement weathers? The answer is, and was at the time, was to go and seek the assistance from the 37 and the local government. And yes, they did, under the leadership of Speaker Theresa Lahey and the honorable, and her honorable colleagues of the 37. I want to thank the 37 and Adelup for introducing eight bills that became law to right the wrongs of the past thirty years that we just mentioned here, and we look forward to the new leadership in the 38 and your committee to progress the Chamorro Land Trust program for the next two years of two years of your term. Don Quinones de Jesús Massey.
Thank you, sir. We're going to go ahead and let the panel get back to their seats and then we'll be calling up the nominees. So we'd like to call on Ms. Fabrian Cruz-Respejo to please come to the table. You want to testify? Yeah, you can come. Go ahead. Just have a seat and then state your name.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is John Cruz. I'm here to support Mr. Artero. I was not going to submit a verbal testimony till after Ms. Canata made her testimony. And I would like to say that in part I support what her idea is about. The controlling language in Chamor Land Trust is Chamoral. It's not land. It's not trust. It's Chamoral. So it's about bloodlines. And if regular land transaction could operate under a hospice of realtors, then it would be, you know, under Guam Real Estate Association or under Guam Housing Corporation or under GURA, any other agencies that are recognized that we can see that have regular transactions, whether it be home or agriculture or anything. But it's a special, it's a special and a much important agency here in Guam. It's for Chamoros and it's about bloodlines. And so when you consider your nominations, I hope you take in consideration that Mr. Cameron has been a stalwart when it comes to cultural, Chamor culture, whether it's the museum or whether it's been the Chamora Village or any other activities, he's been a stalwart. The only person that I hold higher than him was probably the late Tony Ramirez when it came down to recognizing bloodlines and where it went. So when you're consideration, I understand about how you worry about real estate law and how you worry about financing these things, but that's not what the controlling factor is. The controlling factor is about the Chamoral bloodlines and how difficult it is for them as a Chamoral to get property here on Guam. There's an old saying when we were kids. The old saying was land rich, cash poor. And that's basically what a person that gets a lease at Chamor Land Trust, they're pretty much, they'll get that lease, but they're cash poor. They can't develop the land. They can't agriculture it or whatever they need to, they want to do, give it to their kids and so on. But I believe that Mr. Cameron possesses knowledge in how to not only deal with the federal agencies and the hammer that's coming down by Doge, but I think he has well-grounded knowledge on funding and how to get these funds secured to actually actuate these transfers of land. It may be a developing issue. It's been a long time since, I mean, if this problem was simple and it would be solved way back during our dads and moms and grandfathers, but it's not. It's very difficult. And especially when land is precious here in Guam or here out in Micronesia. I mean, outside Guam, all you have is ocean. So I hope you consider him and I hope you take in account that the difficulties, we know what the difficulties are. But unfortunately, the concept of Chamor Land Trust operates outside the regular transactions of real estate. And I respect all the people that, the other two people that were nominated in this arena. But unfortunately, I think out of all the candidates, I think Mr. Cameron is the best qualified to move forward just based on his experience dealing with federal and making sure that federal and local laws are, they don't butt hatreds. And I thank you for your opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz. I'd like to call up now the nominee for Bring Cruz-Respejo to please approach the table here. You can turn on your microphone and introduce yourself and the floor is yours.
Okay, hello. I would like to, this is an acceptance of my nomination to the Chamor Land Trust Commission. This is my testimony. Buenos, and Hafaday, Chairperson Ada and committee members. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony on my nomination to the Chamor Land Trust Committee, CLTC. My name is Fabrian Cruz-Respejo and I'm honored to accept the nomination by Governor Luliya Guerrero and the Lieutenant Governor Joshua Tenorio. Mindful of the 2020 legal settlement with the U.S. Department of Justice that resulted in redefining beneficiaries as eligible beneficiaries for fairness and compliance of federal law, I will diligently uphold these standards, ensuring equitable access to Chamor homelands for all qualified applicants and beneficiaries. My background in real estate and business management aligns with the commission's mission, which is responsible for the disposition of Chamor homelands pursuant to mandates to advance the social, cultural, and economic development and well-being of the Chamoral people by way of residential, agricultural, and commercial land distribution and economic assistance programs. My experience as the principal broker for Blue Continent Realty, combined with my knowledge in property management, financial oversight, business operations, and regulatory compliance, will allow me to effectively contribute and carry on activities to assist the community in obtaining maximum utilization of lands, including the development of lands for their highest and best use in residential and agricultural leasing and commercial leasing. At the same time, I approach this role with humility and openness to learn from my fellow commissioners, the staff and management at CLTC, and especially the community that we serve. I recognize the significance of our duty to ensure that Chamor homelands remain available and accessible to qualified applicants. I am committed to supporting and enforcing policies that promote fair leasing practices, sustainable land use, and economic development initiatives that empower the families across Guam. Transparent governance and ensuring the responsible management of the Chamor Homeland Fund, the Chamor Educational Assistance Fund, and other vital programs under the community commission's jurisdiction will remain top priorities. I will also work to help the commission reach its goals to increase lease issuance, expand private and public partnerships to increase the availability of affordable homes for our constituents and to increase revenues to ensure that the programs under their purview are properly funded. I recognize the importance of partnerships with government agencies, private stakeholders, and the broader community to advance housing development and agricultural sustainability consistent with 21 Guam Code Annotated Chapter 75. I will approach these efforts with cooperation, inclusiveness, and respect to all. Thank you again for this meaningful opportunity to serve the people of Guam in this capacity. And I look forward to working alongside my fellow commissioners and the community partners to serve the people of Guam and our island's best interests. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Respejo. I'll be opening up the panel now for questions from my colleagues. And I'm going to start with the Vice Chair of the Committee, Senator Duñez. You have five minutes, Senator.
Jesus Massey, Mr. Vice Speaker and Chair. Fabrian, I'm happy that you're here today and I was excited to hear the glowing reviews from your colleagues. But I want to concentrate on the one testimony that legitimately calls into question, you know, some of the intent behind what the Chamor Land Trust Commission is supposed to be. So I will direct this question because this is what I believe you have presented in your testimony and your experience. Do you believe that, given the financial institutions that actually are able to give non-fee simple loans and other opportunities for Chamor Land Trust recipients such as Guam Housing Corporation, USDA, SBA, and the VA, do you believe that these institutions basically serve the same purpose as regular financial institutions do? And your intricate knowledge of that process will really help aid in moving forward the opportunities for Chamor Land Trust?
Yes, I do. And I also believe that the local banks, all the banks on Guam, both national and local banks, can also finance for Chamor Land Trust. If you have a certain lease up to a certain period of time, as an example, if you have a 30-year mortgage, but you have a 99-year lease, they can certainly lend. I haven't spoken with any bankers directly on this, but just based on my banking knowledge, there are many leases out there currently, both for condominiums, apartment complexes, commercial leases, that these properties are leased, but yet they have bank financing. Is that your question?
Yes, it was. And this is why I'm, you know, I'm in favor of your nomination because I think this is what the trust needs. I think it needs the expertise of the dealings with land. The other thing I wanted to ask you, and I'm going to talk about a meeting that our Vice Speaker put together with Guam Housing Corporation. What we found in a lot of the discussions that have been brought up by a couple of members that have spoken today is there is a major disconnect, unfortunately, between Guam Housing Corporation, DLM, Chamor Land Trust. And I actually put them all together at one point, then they got broken apart. And I did it because they have to communicate. They all have an integral part of what happens here. But I want to ask this direct question. We asked the president of the Guam Housing Corporation to go back and to work with the administration to get a memorandum of understanding between all of the agencies. They have a standing committee to deal with all of the problems that happen with regard to registering of land and everything else. Would you support giving that directive to the director that's incoming?
Absolutely. I think that anything to smooth the process to better understand how we can not only get these lands into the hands of our people, but how to get them financing that they need to build, not only their homes, but to improve and/or bring in the infrastructure. My basic understanding with one of the holdups for Chamor Land Trust is we are issuing leases, but these individuals, the beneficiaries, don't have or don't have any knowledge of, they are not guided as to how can they build on the, how can they use the leases for its intended purpose? As a commissioner, if I am approved, I hope to better understand what the process is with regard to that aspect within the Chamor Land Trust staff and how we could better help our beneficiaries because I don't believe that the role is only to issue the leases and the land. It doesn't make sense to just give you a piece of land and nothing happens. We need to do better than that.
One final question. You're walking into Chamor Land Trust Commission that right now has at least two large parcels of property that are set aside as subdivisions, really just waiting for infrastructure and then the final approval of surveys and other things that can really jumpstart, you know, this effort. But on the other side, we need revenue for these things. So the final question that I have for you is, do you believe your integral knowledge of real estate and your years of experience will allow you to leverage contracts that are coming, or commercial contracts that are coming up in the future and also any others that would be renewed possibly coming forward to really help Guam Land Use Commission come up with the highest and best use and yield from those properties?
I believe that my unique experience as a commercial lender specifically speaks to that. As a commercial lender and as a former banker, our primary responsibility, of course, is to review all aspects of a company's financials. And I think that that is leading down the right road is we need the funds, we need revenues to support all the programs under the Chamor Land Trust Commission so that we can help all the beneficiaries that are receiving the leases.
Thank you very much, Ms. Respejo. I look forward to the consideration of your confirmation going forward. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Senator Trelahy, you're recognized, ma'am.
Thank you for your testimony. Thank you all for your testimony today. Thank you for recognizing that this trust is a land restoration program recognized by the courts for the benefit of those whose lands were taken by the U.S. government. And its mission is to provide and prioritize residential and agricultural leases. I have no doubt that for all the nominees that they are wonderful people, very, very good at what they do and bring their knowledge to the trust. My concern is that you've been nominated to a commission where previous commissioners were terminated without reason except according to the governor for not answering her phone call. And these include the previous chairperson, who was an astute businesswoman with a master's degree in urban planning, who worked with the AG for a public accounting of the hundreds of problematic leases and successfully defended the land trust from the federal lawsuit. Mr. Herrera, who testified earlier, a former member of the National Chamor who camped out and worked for months to advocate the implementation of the trust and as a commissioner, never faulted in advocating for beneficiaries first. And Mr. Urbanez, a compliance auditor for the Bank of Guam, who then, who when confirmed, asked questions, sought the truth behind the promises made to the commissioners, ensured that the terms of the special deals before them were fully examined. And these two commissioners, they asked that the director be hired according to the law. It had never been done. When we confirm commissioners, we ask them whether they will be able to serve for the benefit of the CLTC beneficiaries, 8,000 since 1995, potentially 60,000, according to the terms of the trust. Still waiting for residential leases. How will you serve knowing the governor can remove you at her whim?
I'm really, I have to just say, this is my first time to serve on a commission. I don't really understand fully the powers of the governor. I am here as her nomination as well as the lieutenant governor's nomination. And I do speak to my integrity and I feel that I will do the best that I can for the people of Guam. I cannot speak to the removal of those individuals that you mentioned because I don't have the knowledge or information as to why specifically they were removed. So if, it's just like when you have any other job, it's at will. And my service here for the commission is at will.
Are you familiar with the special interest pressures put on the CLTC to divert its assets from its primary mission of residential and agricultural leases to special leases for small groups or to other government uses while these beneficiaries continue to wait? Will you advocate prioritizing the residential leases?
I am not aware of any special interest groups and I will uphold the law. The commission's sole purpose is to advance residential, agricultural, and commercial leases for the betterment of the people of Guam.
For the beneficiaries of the trust.
For the beneficiaries of the trust. Thank you for that correction.
Well, do you believe that the mission is valid then still or do you believe that the, like, some senators, that some of the inventory of the trust should be removed and diverted to other government projects to other special groups, other activities, or for unlawful mining or for solar farm investors or at rates below what the public auditor has cited in past audits as not fair market value? There's also proposals to sell minerals in the inventory of the trusts for military-built-up projects in the guise of leveling the land for affordable homes instead of prioritizing the immediately usable land for CLT residential subdivisions, as my colleague pointed out. What is your position on those?
I am not in favor of passing any rules or regulations that are illegal or that are not in line with the policies that are established by the CLTC.
Your husband serves as a cabinet member at the pleasure of the governor. Will this influence your ability to perform this fiduciary duty in the best interest of the beneficiaries of the trust?
Repeat that question.
Your husband serves as a cabinet member at the pleasure of the governor, subject to her termination again. Will this influence your ability to perform as a fiduciary in the best interest of the beneficiaries of the trust?
This will not interfere with my, with my actions on the commission. I'm here solely to represent myself and not my husband, who is a cabinet member.
Jesus Massey. Will you act independently to solicit and hire a director as mandated by statute?
Repeat that question.
Will you act independently to solicit and hire a director as mandated by the statute?
Absolutely, if it's mandated by the statute.
The CLTC is poised to issue residential leases, correct many past discrepancies, and perfect law. and perfect long-ago issued leases, thanks to many of the legislation that we've passed, and to use $9 million of appropriation that's been, should be recently now transferred to the CLTC, if they follow the law, to partner with USDA for sewer and other housing developers so that more homes can be built on limited resources. How will you help in this regard, and do you support the use of that $9 million in this regard?
I'm sorry, your question was very lengthy.
Yes, sorry, we only have five minutes.
So the question is, do I support the use of the funds that are earmarked for infrastructure development in cooperation with the USDA? Absolutely.
Thank you. And do you, and they're also in the process of this huge project of going over every single lease that had been issued, according to, and audited, and renewing those leases, or making them very firm, final, and legal. And so that's a lot of work, and the trust normally spends hours in their meetings. Are you able and willing to commit to that?
Yes, I am. I think one of the first questions when approaching the lease is, there should be a standard form. I don't know if there's currently a standard form for lease, but if there are a lot of discrepancies, maybe it's because the leases were, are not on a standard form.
Yeah, according to the AG's audits, there are all kinds of reasons why they're not standard, and we have a law now in place that outlines exactly how they are going to treat each one of these leases. And it's a very cumbersome project, but they promised to get it done on a very timely manners. And this is important for those who were promised these leases, have these leases, but who have been unable to get water, power, or even build because of other technicalities. So it requires a lot of time and a commitment to follow that law.
Thank you, Senator Chalai. I appreciate your questions to the confirmation. Senator Luhon?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Vice Speaker. Mrs. Rispio, thank you very much for, again, wanting to step up to the plate and serve the community, public service. For all transparency's sake, Mrs. Rispio's husband, Rory, is the director of the Port Authority, general manager down there, and my committee has oversight of the Port Authority of Guam. Likewise, my vice chairs are Senator, of course Senators Duñez and Senator Calvo as well, are vice chairs of our committee, has oversight for the Port Authority of Guam. With that being said, I'm in constant communication with Director Rispio on port-related issues, not land issues, that I don't even sit in the committee on lands. But anyway, that being said, and this is a question I just came up with here, because I just found out that you have, that the CLTC just today have, has a, I guess, detailed director, or administrative director, I guess, just started today?
I understand he's the acting director?
Or, yeah, detailed.
Oh, detailed, okay.
You said he was detailed to that.
I'm not familiar with government terms, pardon me.
Yeah, let me ask, let me ask you this question here, which I would ask all the appointees as well. Prior to the, well, you come before us, the board comes before us for, again, confirmations, okay? The director doesn't come before us for, again, for confirmations, okay? That duty of hiring the director falls upon, of course, the board, okay? Prior to the, I guess, resignations or the at-will removal of the previous board members, they announced that they wanted to have that position as director to go out on, I guess, on a notice, in general notice. That being said, as the incoming directors, should you guys be ratified and confirmed, because my understanding is that was ratified by the previous board as well, that they would open up the, I guess, the search for whoever, you know, it's open up forever. Would the incoming board honor that ratification from the previous board?
I'd say, I mean, if I'm appointed to the commission, I will do whatever is mandated by law. If the previous boards makes a decision, and that's the mandate by law, then we follow the law.
Okay. Again, my understanding is that they ratified it, and because they don't come to us.
So when they ratified, does that mean that's by law?
Yeah, the director does not come to us for confirmation. It's solely on the board's discretion as to who to hire. So my question is, again, because, again, the new board maybe doesn't have to honor what the previous board has done, but because it was ratified by the board prior to their departure, whether or not this incoming board, or yourself, because I was going to ask all of you on time anyway, whether or not they would honor that ratification of an open search for a, I guess, for an administrative director? Because, again, it was just stated earlier by Mr. Gamboa, that he was just detailed starting today.
I think that if a board makes a decision, and it's not against the law, and it's a previous board, the incoming board is mandated to follow that. I'm not sure if there's the process to overturn previous board decisions. I'm not in the position right now to answer that, because I don't know the nature of that decision that was made from the previous board, but I will, however, do what is necessary to follow the law.
Okay. Thank you. Again, if elected as commissioner for the CLTC, what is your position in transferring land out of the CLTC inventory? For example, it's been said that Oka Point is going to be transferred out. What is your position on that?
I don't have a position on that right now, because I don't have all the facts and all the information with regard to why and how, and what the process is of transferring lands out of the CLTC inventory.
Of course, CLTC, of course, it's a land restoration program that was, lands were taken away from the federal government. How would you contribute to the CLTC's mission on issuing residential agricultural leases?
I think the first step, of course, is to identify what are the parcels, what's the inventory under CLTC? And the next step, of course, is to identify zoning. And the other thing is that we have to also look at the topography of the land, because even if the zoning is A or R1, as an example, if the topography is not suitable for building at the moment, it's going to require a lot of investment for the beneficiary. So there's a lot of aspects and steps that need to be taken into consideration before we issue specific leases, in my opinion, you know, for residential or agricultural. Another thing is, what is the proximity to water and power? You know, what is the highest and best use of that property? Where is the location of that property? I mean, if it's in the middle here, but there are properties that are closer to a major roadway, why not, you know, focus on those lands and develop those lands instead? So I think it really requires a comprehensive review of the inventory that the CLTC has.
And I should have mentioned the commercial use as well, because the commercial uses are basically what's supposed to fund the infrastructure for the CLTC. So how would you balance the, again, the need to raise money for the infrastructure in regards to, of course, commercial leases versus residential and agricultural needs?
I think that location is very important in real estate, so depending upon where that location is, even if it's been earmarked for residential, but if that's not the highest and best use for that property, then maybe that needs to be rezoned, and we can lease it for a commercial property. So there's a lot of aspects into going into how we can identify what properties are best for agricultural, residential, or commercial leases.
Okay, that being said, one last question, Mr. Chair here, one last question. Of course, you know, you have been nominated, of course, by the governor, based on your expertise in, you know, real estate and things of that nature. But let me ask you, should the decision come down to the board and yourself in regards to an administrative director? What are you looking at in regards to the qualifications for an administrative director? Should it come down to the decision that you would have to make?
I think that we need to first take a look at what are the requirements for administrative director. I don't think, I mean, I'm sure that, like with any other job, there's a list of requirements, and, you know, what are their job skills, and that's the first thing that I would look at. If it's a matchup, I mean, if it's not, why even consider the candidate?
But we've also heard, of course, Chamor Land Trust, and the Chamor, and the inception of, of course, the Chamor Land Trust, based, going back on bloodlines and all that. So would you factor that into, in their knowledge of?
I think that's a racial question that I, based on the 2020 mandate, I don't think that the beneficiaries of the Chamor Land Trust are exclusive for Chamor bloodline.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Luhon. Senator Gumitata, you're recognized, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mrs. Rispio, for agreeing to serve as a parent of four alumni of Notre Dame High School in Talafolfo. I appreciate the fact that other Royals are absolutely coming forward to serve, and the difficulty that it takes to come before this body and to be able to take, well, a lot of criticism. Maybe some people may not believe in what you're saying here today, but it takes a lot of courage and chutzpah to be here today and to be here with us. So I just want to tell you, again, congratulations on your appointment, and I know that many people are going to be asking a lot of different questions of you. Just a little bit, I wanted to just touch on one thing about the prioritization of the Chamor Land Trust. And it seems like over the years, and from my observation, it seemed like over maybe 15 years ago, there was a big effort near the end of the Camacho administration to be able to say, hey, let's put all of our efforts to prioritize one subdivision, put resources in it, like infrastructure, and then at some point distribute, which I think was admirable at the time. It's a whole task force to do it. At the end of the administration, this is now 2010, maybe? It's now 15 years later. I was just looking at a Google map of the area. This is right next to this Chamor Land Trust property, right near FBLG and Simon Sanchez. There's nothing there right now. There's been no prioritization of these, of putting infrastructure in places to allow more of our people to have a chance. I mean, I know we were stuck on this number of six, but this subdivision could have had 100 families in it. But there's a choice that's made by not just the land trust commissioners, but also its leadership and the administration. Can you, is it possible, if you are confirmed by all of us, will you be open to taking one subdivision and perhaps prioritizing it so that we can put people in and call it a day and say, let's move on to the next subdivision?
Senator Gumitata, that is an excellent idea. And with any developer and even any homeowner who has their own property and wants to build for themselves, one of the first questions they have to look at is finances. So it's an excellent idea, but it's only an idea if you don't have the plan for financing.
Right, and so the idea is, Mrs. Rispio, is that the land trust has money in there to put the infrastructure, to work with the Water Works Authority, the Power Authority. I'm hoping, if confirmed, that at least take one. Can I recommend perhaps, maybe the one next to FBLG, which 15 years ago was seen as a way to kind of get this thing kick-started? I'm hoping that you can do that with the commercial leases and the money and revenues to get at least one?
I think if the funds are earmarked and the funds are available, I think that it's an excellent idea to start, and also working in collaboration, of course, with DPW, GWA, and all the other utility agencies.
Yeah, thank you, Mrs. Rispio. I think that importantly, I think that's one of the things that the Chamor Land Trust Commission, its credibility is not very good in the government of Guam today. When we say we're going to do things, we expect them to do it. Six out of 60,000 since 1994 is absolutely a cruddy track record for this community. We should not accept the, this continuation of, okay, we're going to do something and then just not do it. If we can prioritize, maybe, maybe your help in your experience, because you're really taking a big leap of faith to come and help us, and I'm hoping that you will use your experience to bear upon at least one subdivision to be used, using monies from the commercial leases to do one subdivision. I could be wrong. If people in this room correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we need to do at least one. I hope you'll do at least one.
I think that, I think what's also important is the leadership of CLTC and the staff, because that should also be in line with the goals of the director. We need to funnel those down, because the commissioners, we're not doing the day-to-day active work.
Of course.
It's the director and it's his staff. We need to assess what are their priorities, and that would probably be the first order of business, is what is on the current agenda? What are they currently working on that, you know, maybe we can tie in with this new objective that, you know, you're asking right now?
Mrs. Rispio, I don't mean to interrupt, but I tell you something, that those are great and those are very admirable, but if we can do one, those others will have no problem.
Well, I mean, it's a public forum, we can put that into the goals and objectives for the new director.
No, I think, thank you, and be an advocate for it, because at least one will lead to two, and then two will lead to a commercial lease of big proportion that could help the rest of the land trust. I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, that's all I have. Thank you, and Mr. Rispio, thank you again for stepping forward to serve.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Gumitata. Senator Borja, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mrs. Rispio, for coming before the legislature today. You know, we recognize the critical role of the Chamor Land Trust Commission in allocating its land trust resources effectively and fairly. Should you be confirmed today, given the complexities and the recent turnover within the commission, how do you intend to contribute to long-term stability and restore trust among the land trusts' lessees and the people of Guam?
I can't speak to the integrity of the former commissioners, but I think that the first order of business is to see what are the current agenda items, and really be public and really be transparent. One of the things is, when I received this nomination and I accepted it, of course, the first thing I did was I Googled CLTC, so it's not transparent. A lot of the information is so stelldated. I mean, what my knowledge of CLTC is limited to Google and Yahoo. So I think that's one of the first things is to restore trust, is we need to be transparent, you know, with the beneficiaries. There has to be more dialogue with the community, and it's, a lot of it is just really, you know, as simple as taking those first steps.
Thank you for that. And then also, should you be confirmed, how would you handle disagreements, such as like with the governor, to ensure that the commission's decisions remain focused on the legal and ethical standards set forth for managing land trust resources?
Any disagreements with the governor or any other body, I will always err on the side of the law. So if it's within the law and if it's legal, then we should do it. If it's not within the law or it's not mandated, then you should not be doing it.
Thank you for that. I have no further questions. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Borja. Senator Matanani, you're recognized, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before I get to my questions, I just wanted to say thank you to Ms. Debbie Canata from National Chamor. It's so nice to see you here and your voice and the voice of National Chamor. It's been a while, so thank you for continuing the fight. My question to you, Miss Rispio, and you've probably been asked this in different ways, but as we all know, the mission of the Chamor Land Trust Commission is to manage and administer public land set aside for our Chamor people, whether through residential or agricultural leases. If confirmed, how will you hold true to this mission in light of efforts to commercialize CLTC property, and also to address the concerns from National Chamor?
I think that the development of commercial leases is also an objective of the CLTC. I think that it's clearly stated, it's for residential, agricultural, and commercial leases. And as a matter of fact, from my understanding, from what I read on the stelldated internet, is that the commercial leases will be used as a funding source to help the residential leases, so that they can do the infrastructure. leases so that they can do the infrastructure and help them to also build. So I hope that answers your question.
Given that appointments to government boards by any governor are inherently political, what do you say to those who question nominees and their ability to act independently, ensuring they serve the best interests of our people rather than political agendas or special interests?
I have to say that this is my first nomination to a board. I'm, this is a new arena for me. I'm here and I accepted the nomination based on my, my experience and my work background and my desire to bridge a gap for the Chamorro people of Guam, for our people. I see as a Realtor, as a broker, that there's this gap between the lower income and the higher income and this gap of our people really need help. And that's what I'm here to do. I can't speak to anyone else's opinion other than that.
Thank you, and thank you for accepting the nomination. And just a heads up to the other nominees, those will be the same questions, so thank you.
Thank you, Senator Matanani. Senator Barnett, you're recognized, sir.
So just want to say, Mr. Chair, and thank you for the opportunity to speak and thank you, Ms. Rispicio, for accepting the nomination. I have to say, though, I'm a little bit surprised and a little disappointed at some of your answers. Well, first off, that you knew so little about the Chamorro Land Trust Commission that you had to resort to Googling it, which the nominee came out a while ago. I was kind of expecting you to be a little more versed on just kind of like the, the basics of the CLTC.
I do understand the basics of the CLTC, but I was looking for more in-depth and more recent information.
Are you aware that there are five bills currently introduced in the 38th Guam Legislature that seek to remove land from the Chamorro Land Trust inventory? And it's only, it's not even ended February yet.
Um, I've heard of those bills, but I've not thoroughly read them.
Did you say that you do not have a position on taking lands out of the CLTC inventory?
Currently, I do not have a position. I haven't read those bills. I don't know what the, I guess, the rules and regulations are with regard to removing lands from the CLTC inventory.
But it's your understanding that in the, for example, commercial leases are supposed to be used to generate revenue, to install infrastructure so that people can build on these CLTC lands?
Yes.
So how are we going to make revenue for these individuals if we just give away their property?
I don't know that we're giving away the property, Senator Barnett.
I'm just saying that I would kind of expect you to have a stance on that, you know, seeing as how you're being appointed to the commission. I mean, for example, there's a bill before this legislature to give away the crown jewel of the CLTC inventory, the EPO Supun Point property, just to flat out give it away. And that is a property that we can use to, you know, at least long-term to benefit the beneficiaries of the Chamorro Land Trust. So I'm just saying, I'm a little surprised that you don't have a stance generally on the, because I would absolutely support a commissioner who was opposed to removing lands out of the inventory, because I think that goes counter to what the CLTC is actually about.
I won't develop an opinion if I don't have the facts, so I, I don't have an opinion on whether or not those properties should be removed from the CLTC inventory at this time.
You also said that you were not aware of any special interests attempting to get sweetheart deals with the Chamorro Land Trust properties?
No, I'm not. I don't know what special interest is. Pardon me.
Did you say that you believe residential property should be reprioritized for the highest and best use?
Depending upon the location, absolutely. It doesn't make sense if CLTC, as an example, has a residential property in between two M1 zones or in between two commercial zones. It just doesn't make sense. So that is what I'm speaking to with my experience as a, as a Realtor, as a real estate broker. We want to use the property for the highest and best use and maybe at the time when it was earmarked for residential and those other properties weren't developed at the time, that would have been a good idea to put residential there, but I think we need to visit what the map says and what's, you know, what the topography is and what's there now.
Are you aware at all of the circumstances surrounding the termination of Commissioners Zabanas and Commissioner Herrera?
No, I'm not.
Do you read the news?
I do.
You didn't see that?
All I know is what's in the news, so.
So what did you?
I can't speak to them because I'm not here for them, Senator Barnett.
But the reason why we're asking you, Mrs. Rispicio, is because the governor fired these two commissioners. One of them, she said, he didn't answer the call. And this commissioner was also talking about the statute relative to installing a CLTC director, which you just said on the record you would support. And then the other commissioner was fired, I'm assuming, because, you know, for me, these commissioners understand the basics of the CLTC and they're kind of moving in that direction. And I just, I just think, you know, when we're talking, when we talk about defunto Uncle Paul Perdallion, defunto Anget, I think they would shudder to see how we're installing these, these interests of Realtors, because I don't think the interests of, of real estate and Realtors necessarily align or even parallel to the point of the Chamorro Land Trust Commission.
Are you speaking to my interests or to my experience? Because I'm not only a Realtor, I'm also a former banker, I'm also a former commercial lender, and I also have other relative experience that I would lend to for the commission.
Right, and I appreciate it.
I think that it's very important to understand real estate and understand land in order to be on the commission. Otherwise, how could you really best help our people of Guam if you don't understand the use of land?
Yeah, but the use, the use of land, with all due respect, ma'am, the use of, of land and relative to Realtors and real estate is different from the use of this very sacred trust. It's not the same thing. That's, that's the point I'm, I'm trying to make, ma'am. And so the reason why we're asking you these questions about your ability to be impartial and independent is because the CLTC commissioners are supposed to be free from political influence. I mean, it's right there in black and white on the tenets of what it means to serve as a commissioner. And so that's why we're, we're kind of going in and asking these questions, because it's very important. We're at a pivotal, we're at a crossroads with these CLT properties. And so that's why we keep trying to drive that point home, if you're going to be able to serve independently and, and in the best interests of the beneficiaries of the trust.
I believe that I am.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity.
Thank you, Senator Barnett. Senator Cavill, you're recognized, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for your testimony, Ms. Rispicio, and thank you for wanting to serve in this capacity. I wanted to just understand what is your vision for the future of Chamorro Land Trust? And in what ways do you think current policies might be improved to better serve the interests of the people while advancing the mission of CLTC?
So that's a twofold question. I think that first and foremost, my vision for the Chamorro Land Trust Commission is to reinforce what their mission statement is, is to effectuate leases, residential leases, agricultural leases, and commercial leases for its beneficiaries. I will support that vision. And what was the second part of your question?
In what ways do you think current policies might be improved to better serve the people of Guam and while advancing the mission of CLTC?
So with regard to current policies, I don't know what the policies are specifically speaking to a lot of the programs that are managed by CLTC. As a commissioner, I would like to further dialogue with the staff so that we, we can see what are the current policies and procedures and why haven't we advanced? There has to be a reason. And then, well, maybe they don't have the tools. We don't know. At this point, I don't know.
I just wanted you to expound, I know you're a Realtor and that background makes you, you know, your expertise in that field can actually be helpful to serve this board. But I do understand that you also have other interests or other involvement. Can you expound better, just so we can understand how these interests can actually influence or not influence, but help with the board, with this position?
So I think that my experience as a commercial lender and a former banker will also help me to understand the programs such as the Chamorro Home Loan Fund, the Chamorro Development Fund, and the Chamorro Loan Guaranteed Fund, among others that are administered by CLTC. So my experience in commercial lending and in banking, I believe, will also help me to maybe streamline the leases that everyone is talking about, that there's so many different kind of leases. I think that I can use my experience and background there. And also my current board experience with the Guam Association Realtors and the management level positions that I've had can also help me with financial oversight and regulatory compliance issues.
I understand that you're a broker with 100 interests in blue continent realty. What other private involvements do you have with regards to real estate?
Can you please clarify the question, private involvements?
Aside from being a broker, you also run a pub, a private, or is it a consulting group?
Yes. So right now, I, I'm also the principal owner of Pacific Consulting Group, which is a company that I actually started. I felt that there was a need for my current, my clients that were moving to Guam as contractors did not know how to start their businesses on Guam. So my business primarily helps businesses that come to Guam attain business license, you know, streamline that process for them and things of that nature.
That's all my question. Thank you so much. I appreciate your answers. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Cavill. Mr. Rispicio, I think the only question I probably would have is what fresh and innovative perspectives would you bring to the Chamorro Land Trust Commission?
Repeat the question.
What fresh and innovative perspectives would you bring to the Chamorro Land Trust Commission?
I think, just the first thought that I have off of, you know, when I, when we talk about commercial leases, I think that there's so much activity on Guam right now with regards to the buildup and there are so many companies that are moving to Guam, not only to serve our people, but to also serve the movement of military personnel. And, you know, CLTC has inventory that can be used for commercial leases so that we can truly help the, our people of Guam and the beneficiaries of CLTC.
Do you believe that with your experience, with Mr. Rojas' experience, Mr. Cameron's experience, and the rest of the board and the members at the CLTC, do you guys, do you believe that you guys would be able to move forward the listing of those who are waiting, have been waiting for properties and that will finally get some type of movement going to get these folks into either agricultural or residential properties?
I think with the collective diverse background of the other two commissioners that are, have been appointed and the current board members, I think that with open communication and collaboration with the board members as well as all the other agencies on the island, I think that we can make progress.
Uh, thank you for that. And I hope that, you know, there will always be a quorum made so that we can always see that there's progress being made and that things continue to move forward. It is my hope that, you know, we, we see this happening very soon. Thank you for your, your time and thank you for being here in front of the, the panel. And we look forward to moving your confirmation packet forward and we see where, you know, on, on the floor. But thank you so very much. I appreciate you.
Thank you very much, Vice Speaker.
I'd like to call next to the, to the table, Mr. Joseph Artero Cameron.
Mago tu na matu pago. But I'll, I'll just say that most of what I have to say is in Chamorro. Everything that you need to know has already been described to you in English. Of course, without any of the questions you may have, I will answer it in English and then I will answer it in Chamorro as well. I believe the listening public will need to know that. I am reminded, and I, I have a disclaimer here. I was the president of Chamorro Affairs. Everything Chamorro. I take personal offense on Debbie Canata's comments, because when it said everything Chamorro, she doesn't know, I was sitting on the programmatic agreements three to four times a month from 2011 to 2016. She wasn't in any of those meetings that I sat.
Mr. Cameron, we're just here for your testimony. We can, just for your confirmation?
Yes, but I, I, I want to have a disclaimer that she says that I don't qualify and I disagree. I would like for us to stand just for a moment of silence, please. Please. That's the big question of today. There's three of us, but can we trust the three of you? That's a very valid question. I've lived my life here in Guam since 1986 on as an adult. I grew up never speaking English as a child born. It was never allowed in my family to speak.
You know, just right the wrong somehow. And I'm not nickel and diming whoever Mr. Respecho or whoever I said the governor put somebody over there and he's not, he's, he talks on the background, you know, those type of talk, right? Oh, wow. So I'm here to return to speak plainly. The people of Guam are asking, what is the next move? Are your plans real? Or are they just shelves like most government plans are? I think that's what you're, you're begging each of us, that question. What are you going to do? And clearly, I, I, I do have a voice that doesn't stop, but I'll stop right now. And I'll take some questions.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron. Go ahead and start out the questions from the panel here. Vice Chair Duñez.
Sí, Jesús Masi, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for your testimony, Mr. Cameron. I think most of those that came to support you kind of have supported and embodied what you've had to say in terms of what your intentions are. So I really only just have a couple of questions. When I look at the balance of the nominees, I look to you to really be that voice as many questions have come up to. Where are we with the leases? Helping our people? And how do we move forward? And I want to ask you the same question that I asked Ms. Respecho, Mrs. Respecho. We had a meeting, once again, I'm going to hearken back to that, over a week ago, with Guam Housing Corporation. And we're going to have a nominee that's going to be up here, that's going to be an expert, because he was there for a long time. The biggest frustration that they had in, in what was mentioned about the issue of when the storm Mawar came in and the issues of finding out unregistered lands. And these are properties that have notes against them, have mortgages, how did that happen? And so my thing is, is that I see a huge disconnect between the Chumor Land Trust Commission, Department of Land Management, all the regulatory, and it's, and it's like, I seen this example the other day, it's like, talk about this, right? Joe, we're going to have to ensure that all of those land agencies, particularly those that are responsible for the land registration, and, you know, in, in terms of what the, the, what do you call that, surveys and everything else, my goodness, this thing has to be seamless. This is one government. And the bottom line is, is that I, I want to see if you're committed to ensuring that you have a working group put together. And as part of the board's major, major initiative is to work with not only Guam Housing Corporation, but the, that the, the financial institutions which can issue those loans to be able to have those people realize building their homes, because they're non-conventional. They are non-fee simple properties. So it is Guam Housing Corporation. It is veterans in working with Guam Housing Corporation. It is, you know, the, 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 the other opportunities of leveraging with USDA. But things can't move, Joe, unless we have the ability to straighten out all those issues, particularly of surveys and of land registration. That's inexcusable. All those lots that are currently not registered should be the top priority. Get those doggone things registered so that we can move forward with whatever conditions exist with those who are currently on the properties. I want to hear your discussion on that.
I'm so glad you mentioned that, because when I was talking to John Beneventi and I was talking to other folks in the utilities, this has been way back since 2010, 2012, no, 2011 on. And one of the things that came to my mind way back then was, is there really a plan that the Chumor Land Trust has that talks about the, the nuts and bolts of what it would cost moving forward to place those infrastructures? Or are we just nickel and diming says, oh, wouldn't we love that? That's a pie in the sky. I think, like I said, plans cannot be plans if they're not living. They have to have legs. I believe moving forward to, to really be sincere, and like you said, is there's a collective gathering of the, the Department of Land Management thoughts, the ancestral lands, the Chumor Land Use Commission, the Chumor, the Chumor Trust, Land Trust, like it used to. And I think we can do that. We don't need any executive order to tell us to do that. It just means that it's the Maoli thing to do. We just need to get our heads together and wrap around that and, and see, like what you had just said, what is, what are the barriers, right? And it, it doesn't take a college degree to know that. It just takes common sense to say, hey, why are we 50 years later still here? So yeah, I agree with you.
That's really all I have, Joe, because I mean, to me, every time we have a hearing here, we're asking the same questions over and over again. What is the status of the subdivisions that we know already have been established? What is the status of being able to go in and, and, and get those surveys done? Make sure that that's registered. That's basic. You know, Joe, I, I hope that what, when you go at this, what I'm looking for you to do with the other commissioners is, you know, you're going to be the nuts and bolts, you know, advocate, because if we don't straighten these things out, really, we're just spinning our wheels. We can be on the list of recipients and we can start chopping away that. But I had that when I was at Guam Housing Corporation. So many times, everyone that came in that, that was identified that they had a property and were ready to go and close on their, you know, or help them open up their finance, you know, financial transaction and everything else and start working on it. Man, you know, they've already got their plan, they've, they're ready to go, they can, they, they've already cleared for financing of $250,000 and the like. And man, everything stops, because we go in, the land doesn't have a survey. The land's not registered. I mean, it, it, it's, it's impossible to go, that we're going to go out there and we're going to try to straighten up this thing and get this thing moving without even making sure that the basics are intact. And that's what I look forward from you, Joe.
We have lost so many of those who were given properties, even way back when Carl was told, don't do that. Well, he did, in the South, right? So just as an example, no punching bags, I'm just saying, some of them have left and they have a better life in the States they could have had here. So how do we mitigate that? And I thank you for that question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, that, that's all I have.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Senator Trelawney, you're recognized, ma'am.
Sí, Jesús Masi, para tu testimonio. Just want to ask you what I asked some of the others, or, so you're familiar with the trust and some of the issues that it faces. Are you familiar with the delays that cause, or the issues that cause the delays in leasing? And the root causes for these delays, including a federal lawsuit, an AG investigation into corruption, political interference, special interests being prioritized above the residential leases, failure of previous AGs to complete land registrations, previous boards and directors on the CLTC to complete surveys and subdivisions, failures of past directors to accurately follow the list of applicants and to follow, and to allow exceptions to names, dates, types of leases, beneficiaries, and a revolving door of directors, and the failure of the commission to independently hire a director as mandated by statute. Are you familiar with those?
Oh, I'm very familiar. I just keep my mouth shut most of the time about it, and I might open my mouth and insert my foot. But, but I will tell you though, quite frankly, and you know me for years, Ben is my brother. His brother and sister, they were with me in college in North Carolina, and we were together for four years. When I get out of the door from the airport, do I go to Jigu to say, "Hafay, ma'am, monozu pa' guma, Ben?" So I know the family of Ben Pangalina. And, and you've been around Ben, God knows, you know, you know his soul. So what I, my answer to you is this, it almost seems, and I'm going to open my mouth, I'm going to insert my foot, it almost appears, and it almost seems that maybe the language or the title Chumor Land Trust Commission should not be. Maybe it should be that it incorporates and that you have the legs that runs and that is seamless, as Senator Duñez was saying earlier. Maybe we need to recapture those, those, those potholes in what's causing some of our delays, because I don't know the, the, the actual, well, I looked at the, I didn't Google, but I did look to see whether or not they have the adequate staff. And you said, do you really have a revolving door?
Of directors?
Yeah, yeah.
Do you see that too?
Well, I've opened mouth and served food, yes.
Do you see that it's the commission's duty to, and mandate by statute to hire its own director?
You know, I, I've worked for five governors, and, and my answer to you is this. When Eddie Calvo said, I want Joseph Cameron to be president of Chumor Affairs, he gathered a group of individuals, because it was a public corporation government. And he said to the Public Corporation Board of Trustees, like any trustee says, "Zahudis Joseph Cameron, sinamonun considera." And, and, and governors do that across the board, where sometimes they see somebody that's really good, I would like to think I was one of them, and ask them if they could consider hiring them. But then, you know, I remembered when Carl Geteris first won the election, and three months later, I think I was picked up, and, and he took me in and he says, "Hey, I want you to be director of Department of Vocational Leadership." I says, "Hey, I don't want that." He says, "You have to take it, because nobody else will." Honest to God, as God is my witness, I was so saddened, and I cried about it. But look where it took me today. So maybe this is one of those sad moments in my life that, because I did tell the governor, quite honestly, I says, "Oh, why me?" I did ask that question. And she, I said, "I'm not your sup, your supreme law guy, I mean, land guy." And she says, "But you have Chumor passion." And I think that's what's lacking in our commission. You have this passion for advocacy. You, and maybe advocacy is a legal term, which it is, it means to protect. And I, I hope to be part of that, Senator Trelawney, to be part of the protectionist.
So are you willing to follow, follow that mandate about appointing your-
Absolutely, absolutely, absolutely.
Hiring your own director?
I think we, as a commission who's governed by laws, we need to, even if it's coming from the governor, which is okay, we need to look at the quality of that work, because we got too many embers in the fire that we have to really immediately spark. Don't you agree?
I think you should follow the mandate and hire your own director. I think the revolving door of directors has really been a detriment to the trust and to the beneficiaries. There are, you mentioned, you were aware of the five bills introduced in the 38th Guam legislature so far proposing to remove land from the CLTC inventory. Do you believe that those transfers, even for other government purposes, should occur? After we've talked about the reasons for all the delay in use of those properties?
I am not party to the intimacies of those conversations. So I'm limited as to what I would truly want to say, but certainly in another day, once I look at it, you can call me in and I'll talk to you. I really will. I think if there's not that open discussion, I think we're not going to move anywhere. I've seen some things that are happening where they're legislated. One was an example that I heard where a senator is recommending a property across JFK. It's a budding to the Department of Integrated Services property, and it's kind of like where members see Mr. Nelson when he had the car wash, right there. Their schools closing, the Special Olympics, their schools closing, the Special Olympics could probably take an interest, because they have all the, what? They have the fields, they have, they have the rooms, they, they, they can do a lot more, I think, rather than going after Chumor Land Trust property.
The Chumor Land Trust, because of the work and the foundation laid by some of those commissioners who were terminated or not renewed in the past, they are, the CLTC is now poised to issue again residential leases after the litigation has been resolved, to correct past discrepancies and perfect long ago issued leases, to use the $9 million appropriated and that they advocated for with USDA for sewer and other housing developers so that more homes can be built, unlimited resources if we have sewer. Do you support these efforts by the past commissioners?
I support what will make all the, the intent of the law from the very beginning. If the $9 million will help develop the, the, the Jigu subdivision, whatever, that, let's try one and let's make it work, I can support that. I'll be upfront with you. I can support that. But I will be very careful that I don't slip on my own tongue, on my own spit on my face, because, you know, there's too many times when people engage in, in these transactions and they've held it for X amount of years, I don't know how many years, 50, 25? Hafay? Cuanto años?
Which one?
99 years. 99 years, wow.
Which, which one are you talking about?
I'm talking about, I'm talking about something you just said, 9 million.
Yeah, we just, they just got that in the last budget, nine, finally. They got money for infrastructure, particularly for that subdivision up in Jigu that they have been planning to work with USDA. They hope to use this as their share, partner with USDA, put in infrastructure, and the board and the direct, the now acting director, Mr. Joey Cruz, was working on these things. So these, they had also in the past identified their top five areas to create subdivisions.
Party is there, I'm sorry.
The commissioner, sorry, the board.
Dispenser.
The commission. And, you know, they identified their top five, and all of this, as you said, was supposed to partner with GWA. Now they have USDA to partner with, hopefully, or to just use these funds straight out for infrastructure. So, but, so, and they've done marvelous efforts, I think, in directing that applicants would be pre-screened by Guam Housing Corporation so that we know whether they're eligible and they can build right away, that, you know, they can meet their own requirements as well under the leases. And so they put a lot of work into these. This one in particular was supposed to be pilot, and then the, and the others that they have listed as priority. I think the partnership with GWA has been slow, and I hope that you can encourage that to be quicker, because they do have funds themselves that they can use. And finally, I just want to talk about commercial leases. So while they are authorized to do commercial leases, they are only authorized to do a very, very limited amount of commercial leases. It's really not supposed to, let's take our land and make the most money that we can. That's not what this trust was for. It's, let's take our land, lease it out for residential and agricultural purposes, and make these communities livable. And if we need to, and if we have land, and the law is very specific, and if we have land that is not necessary for residential or agricultural leases, then we can lease it out for commercial purposes. And of course, get, get the best value. And the Chumor Land Trust hasn't even always gotten the best value for the leases, the very limited commercial leases that it has got. Sometimes, because the legislature, you know, describes the terms, and to our detriment, sometimes we have done better. So we've been able to improve the terms that the, the board has sent down. And you know, there's a whole history on this. So we are looking to you to get the best value for commercial leases, but to remember always the priority of residential and agricultural leases. That's the purpose for these commercial leases.
That's the law.
And so you talked about the golf course, but what about, so what do you support there? Have you decided you support the continuation of the lease with the golf course, or this new lease, same, same rates with a solar farm who's going to make millions of dollars in profit?
I think, I think not being on the table to see the finite details, I would be remiss to, to really give a hard knock, Fort Knox answer, but I will certainly, I can tell you that I'm the protector in.
Sí, Jesús Masi, for your answers. Thank you, Mr.
Thank you, Senator Trelawney. Senator Lujan, you're recognized, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sí, Jesús Masi, para tu testimonio. Thank you very much again, Jesús Masi, no aceptaii, en apuntani, gobetnu, por nsetbist Chumor Land Trust, especialmente, tata Guam. So thank you very much for wanting to step up and, and, and serve the people of Guam again in another capacity.
Sí, señor. Sí, Jesús Masi. Thank you, thank you very much for that.
Let me ask you the same question that I asked actually Ms. Respecho earlier as, as well, because this just came before us today, and I didn't know this that happened, but the Chumor Land Trust just today, according to Mr. Moa, that he is the, the, I guess he was assigned to the Chumor Land Trust, detailed to the Chumor Land Trust, just starting today. Prior to the finitza, the commission members knew, prior to that happening, the board members had ratified, of course, that the, that they will go out and, I guess, a worldwide search pretty much on, on a, a, a director, a director. And that was ratified. Now, the incoming board should, your folks be, be, again, confirm, would, in your capacity, would you, would you honor that ratification of the previous board?
I will revisit that. I'm not comfortable. And I'll tell you, in the five governors that I've served, quite honestly, I've been offered the moon for certain departments that have pay, really big pay, and I, somehow I often get to the bottom of the, the pit pay of $55,000 and no more. And that, and look at what I'm seeing now, over $100,000. I would never accept a position, senators, that I don't think I can, I can help. I would not do that to myself. That's broadie, B-R-O-D-I-E-E, if I spell that right. I would not do that. And I think, and I want to tell you that I trust Lulian Guerrero a lot. I really do. I trusted all the other governors I've worked for a lot, I really do. But where's the middle ground? Where we get the people's voice injected so that we understand why things happen the way they are? There's a lot of shadow, smokescreen of what, I don't know why people get fired. From what I understand, in my work in private industry, you fire your own self. I'm just telling you, that question came about.
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Cameron, the reason why I'm asking this question, because the board members, you guys come before us for, again, your appointments come before us, again, again, for us to be able to ratify that and, and, and confirm. But the, but we have nothing to do, of course, with the administrative director. The administrative director is hired by the board, hired by the board. So that, that being said, hired by the board, it's not necessarily appointed by the governor, it's hired by the board.
Correct.
So that's what I, I'm asking at, at this point, right? I'm not asking, again, because all of you are appointees of, of, of the governor.
Yes.
And we accept that, and whoever she wants to work for her, it's up to her. But at this point, like I said, I'm, I'm asking, because you will be the ones, or the previous boards, the previous board was the one that said, we're going to go out in a worldwide search for a, for a director. So again, that, that being, that being said, whether you, in your personal capacity, will you honor the previous board's decision on worldwide search? Or, because it's, it's you folks that will hire the administrative director?
Wow, you're really asking me to speak. I'm sorry, but looking outside of Guam does not suit me.
No, it doesn't have to be outside of Guam, it's just a worldwide search.
This worldwide search doesn't suit me.
There could be Chumor's and-
I want to stay home and find if who is the best qualified home. I'm not going to go to San Diego, or San Francisco, or Iowa, or New York, or Saudi Arabia, or Iran. I'm not going to do that.
Yeah, island-wide search then.
De biya, eh?
Okay, okay. Okay, so you would, basically you said you would honor that, that, the ratification of an island-wide search, basically. I think that's what they meant with that.
Yeah, I don't want that artificial insemination that doesn't even have a baby, that's just Chumor on it.
Okay, okay. I got that answer, okay, got it. The other thing, what would you do to prevent, because I, I know that the trust has been, the funds of the trust has been maybe taken before? What would you do in, in, you know, in the future, moving forward, to ensure that that money stays within the trust?
I think the legislature needs to pass a law that says, like they've done on other laws, that it says it cannot be part of the transfer authority of the governor. That's your law. I'm not a lawyer, I'm not a lawmaker, but it would seem like this is not new to you all. You're not under your first rodeo. So if you think that it is for the best of the public, and that it is sincere that the money was placed in that, then make sure that it doesn't remove itself through any augmented transfer authority. Just plainly, I mean, let's, let's make sense with our laws, right? I mean, what's the, what's the holdup?
I mean, we have done, we have done that before, the legislature has done that before, being specifically make sure that there's no transfer authority. That's because it, in, in previous times, they were transferred out, but lack, lack, lack of that, lack of a law at this point, again, would, what would you do to make sure that, that that money stays within, within the, the trust? Because you, you're, you're asking, you're asking us at this point, you said, trust us, trust me, trust us. So-
That's what the people of Guam are asking, Senator.
Yeah, so my question, my question is, if we, we do that by law, which is easy, we can, we can do that, which means we won't, we can't trust you to make sure that that money stays in within, within the trust.
No, that does, no, that's, that is, that's upside down, Senator. I, and I, I don't mean that in the most offensive way, but part of protectionism is, is setting the rules down as to where the money and where the money cannot go. I just beg your indulgence if you would see it my way. Truly, I, I beg your indulgence.
No, I mean, we, like I said, we can easily, we can easily, we can easily do that. And we have done that in the past, because there were transfers out, there were transfers out, and that means that the legislature does not trust whoever the administration is to, to ensure that that money stays there and, and not spent in anything else. So, and, I mean, and you're, if you're suggesting that we do that, that's, that could be easily, easily done. But that means it's, it's basically kind of saying that the, the, the commissioners at this point won't have the intestinal fortitude to, to, to stand up to whoever the administration is, transfer the money out.
You know, you know, you got the good, the bad, and the ugly of appointees, okay? Every governor goes through that same crap. And I'm just saying, when I walk into an appointment, it's not with that intent, my, my intent is pure. And listen, at my age, I don't look good in stripes or orange, okay? That's not going to happen.
Orange. It's orange. Anyway, I, I, I think that's it, that, at, at this point, I think you've answered some of the questions already, based on your testimony. But thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Senator Lujan. Senator Gubitato.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Cameron, for once again answering the call to serve the people of Guam. Your public service, I mean, it's, it's easy to see that, you know, and we've, you and I served before too, together. you and I served before too together. So again, thank you for your service. I'm just going to go just right to the heart of this if I can. And it's, I mentioned it earlier, is that the Tomorrowland Trust Commission, its credibility is not so hot. How do you bring back some of the credibility that's been lost since the founding of the actual commission? How do you bring it back today in 2025?
I think we just need to let our actions move. We, we need to do what we said we were going to do and do it quickly. So if there's a cancer in your body, you must excise, excise that cancer. That's the only time you're going to get well. So if the, the whole issue here is trust, well, the people are looking for outcomes, right? Isn't that really what they're looking for? So maybe catapulting and removing some of these regulatory things, like President Trump has been saying, you know, I'm going to get rid of some of these regulatory things so we can get the job done. If it takes that, I think, I've tried to navigate the, the trust laws and the regulations. And quite honestly, halfway through, I got lost because it wasn't, it wasn't the way I thought I could navigate. If I, as an individual who's had thirty-plus years in government, twenty-two years in private sector, and had trust, how is it that I cannot even navigate that document for the life of me, much more somebody who hasn't done everything I have done? Are we, are we allowing advocacy to actually go out to the people and regularly informing them what needs to happen? Or what we're going to do? That's really a question in my mind, right? Is, okay, so I heard there are low lying fruits. Let's grab those. Because you can't reach the high fruits, but you certainly got some fruits. I hear about it. Even though I read it in the paper, I'd rather talk to you personally about it. Because I don't know what the paper has, as, you know, I don't trust newspapers, by the way. I'm sorry. If I offended any of you up there, I like to do nuts and bolts. Let me talk with you. But I think, yeah, I think I heard some discussion earlier with Mr. Respecho about let's, let's grab the low, low lying fruits and let's just do stuffs. And I, I would support that wholeheartedly, Senator. I really will.
Yeah, Mr. Cameron, and I, I think I totally get it. I know that your track record is pretty clear on working in these programs. I'm not going to, not going to belabor it right now. But I'm going to go back a little bit. I mean, it's taken all these years. I mean, can you end the commission? I don't, I was trying to find a word in Chamorro. My, my range is very didi di ni. But I want to say this, lo Chamorro du, but care. The word care.
Care? Oh, that's a beautiful word.
And so when we think of these leases that have just been sitting, or not even sitting, we just need to do a better job at the commission. Can we prioritize one subdivision? And map it, record it?
Yes.
Get GWA, GPA to come in with your resources from the commercial leases and put in this, in the infrastructure to help support families that have been on this list for years? Can you, once you're, you know, you're, you're going to, going to get all of us to vote here. But can you prioritize that and do one and then go to two, then say a three? But let's do one. Are you, can we do that? Okay, are you able to help contribute to getting us to do one? How's that?
Hungan, hungan, hungan maga hito. Per se, di finu Chamorro ni unsipia karida.
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 Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cameron, again for, I mean, you could be doing something else, but you're choosing to serve. So thank you again, sir.
I have a ninety-one-year-old mama that's first in my life, and she's watching TV because she can't be here. But her birthday is on March third, ninety-one, the oldest of our terre clam on Guam. And I just want to let you know, she murmurs into my mind daily.
I'm sure.
What, what needs to happen in my life and the people of Guam. And I think, I think when I told mother the law that Uncle Paul passed years ago, almost fifty years ago about, she goes, wow, when my mom died, they took everything of Anderson. Nobody in the Tomorrowland Trust even talked to us, and that was because of us. They could hungan ne maga hit. So I'm not, it's conflict of interest for me now to say, oh, mom, go to Tomorrowland Trust and get some properties. It's conflict. It's, it's water under the bridge. But for those people that can, who need it, I think we should, we should revisit that and make it happen.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Gumutato. Senator Barnett, you're recognized, sir.
Zuzmasi, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity to speak. And thank you, Mr. Cameron, for your testimony this morning. You know, I want to just read from your testimony. "I am here to return and to speak plainly the need to advance with great urgency, the very reason the Tomorrowland Trust Commission is all about. Further interference by lawmakers waters down the mandates of the CLTC. I see these activities to usurp the CLTC fiduciary obligations. The CLTC is the door all must enter to first converse with, not the Guam Legislature." I like that.
Yeah, I think so. I think, I think it kind of puts us on the same level playing field because we love each other. And it's such a small island, really. And gosh, I know you guys personally. Oh, thank you so much, Senator Sabina. I, I see you over there. I did not miss, miss out on you. And she's a very strong supporter as well of, of what we're trying to do here, and you all are. And please, understand that I'm not magic. I'm not the euphoria, the cure. But I will certainly be the gorilla in the room, as Eddie Cavill used to say during his cabinet meetings. And something's urging, and he says, is that gorilla in the room? And so everybody said, who's Joseph Cameron? For God's sakes, just give it to him. So that's probably my bite. Just give it to him.
So, Mr. Cameron, are we to take your testimony here? And, and you know, I'm going to take you at your word. Does this mean that generally speaking, you're opposed to legislative involvement, both currently in the thirty-eighth with five bills introduced to take land out of the CLTC inventory?
That should have gone to us for full disclosure. I don't support senators just on a whim and even coming to visit agencies and. Taza it's Chamorro ni, taza, taza no, puma is in the commission, nobody did, excuse me? Did the, did the senators come to you? Praise God, Guam ekum. Lazzi, napara, putabot, napara.
Do we also take that to mean that you, you don't support the legislative interference that was ongoing in the thirty-seventh Guam Legislature relative to the leasing of the Guam Raceway Park? Because I'll just say, just for, for background, then Speaker Cholai and I had introduced a bill with the support and with the actual input of the Tomorrowland Trust Commission. And they, they supported this bill. They supported the intent. They testified that if this bill were to pass, that the raceway would be open in, I believe, sixty to ninety days. And that bill, unfortunately, wasn't the one that got passed. Instead, I feel the special interest lobbied for another bill to be passed in the budget. And now we're, there's no raceway that's open.
I hear from the, our chair, my Auntie Arlene, that, that did go through the process of discussion, the raceway. So I, I would say, yeah, for that, I would, I would support absolutely. I mean, if it made its way and the parties that needed to be involved were involved, I certainly would support that. I mean, I'm not going to spill water, spill milk or something or whatever. I just looked back and I saw my Auntie Arlene that says, yeah, that has mustered the litmus test. Would I support the passing endeavors? Absolutely.
And I think that's what's important is that we have, we have some good people at the Tomorrowland Trust Commission. We had some good people. And you said the governor chose you to serve because you have Chamorro passion. But I just want to say on the record that, you know, when we talk about Chamorro passion, Signor Debit Herrera and Mr. John Abanas also, I feel like, have a very lot of Chamorro passion. Yet that did not save them from being fired by the same governor who appointed you, Mr. Cameron.
Zasi Debbie, at the moment, Zasi Debbie, I ain't agree nice as on Palan. Lo pa be la saha, didi di ni, zapa da si diu molam, but the gods that that fanat and friend, you know, Debbie? People blame us, that comment to Susan, Zasi Debbie, keep paying, he guy in that man. She and I discussed, and she, you know, we just kept texting each other, the hearts and the love, you know, on the WhatsApp. And clearly, don't let her testimony be the end all because it's continuing. And Nation Chamorro is, is one of my love.
Well, Mr. Cameron, I know you can't really blame us for being skeptical because we have a lot, a lot of nominees that come through here. And, you know, Lana, they say one thing, then put a reverse, you know, when they, they get appointed. So Zuzmasi again for the opportunity to speak, and thank you, Mr. Cameron.
Understand, Senator, please. I am not the cure all, but I will help.
Thank you, Senator Barnett, and I'd also like to recognize my colleague, Senator Perez. Thank you, ma'am, for being here. Senator Cavill, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Happy day, Mr. Cameron. Mr. Joe, we've known each other for a long time. And I could attest that when you take on responsibility, you give your heart and soul to it. I know that for sure. I'd like to thank you for accepting this appointment and wanting to put out yourself there and, and contribute to, to the people, to our island by being a board member. You mentioned earlier, which struck me a lot, it is revisiting laws. I like that. In your view, what are the most significant legal or regulatory challenges currently facing the commission? And how would you work to address or adapt to these challenges when you become or if you are confirmed as one of the board members or board director?
I, I, I sort of like, I want to say something to you that was very pleasing. One of my best friends in my teens was Judge Abati. And when he decided to go back to the States, he knew that law books were bubble gum to my eyes. And so he gave me several thousand books. I decided I'll keep some, and I gave the rest to the Department of Correction. Because I believe that some people are in there who are not supposed to be in there, and they should be able to advocate for themselves to look at law books. And other, other judiciary and, and prisons do the same thing. So if you see any law books up there, I, I made it happen. I'm going to come back to your statement. I, I really have a, a bittersweet in my mouth with the, with the, is it the Davis? Is that the lawsuit? What was that lawsuit? Davis? Manu ne di, like, na na, gua di ri sonia, that, lo ti Chamorro ne, lo gua di ri sonia? He's not Chamorro, but he has rights.
That's a different case. The one here was the.
The one that we're just now settling, Haji Tu?
No, 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 it's the. No, 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 that's, that's for a different, that's for that.
What's that got to do with our?
It was with a Department of Federal Agency.
You have to manuna.
Housing, Federal Agency on housing.
Let me understand, have a term manuna, a ho honu, it's Tomorrowland Trust Commission. What does that? Because, does that really impact the Tomorrowland Trust law? That recent settlement? Okay, so we have one last thing to worry about.
Mr. Cameron, given the complex legacy of Chamorro land rights and the pressures of modern development, how do you personally balance the need to honor traditional values with the demands of progressive contemporary governance?
That sounds like a marriage. Something blue, something whatever new. Very good question. I wish I was, I was quite ready to answer that like a genius, but I don't. But I, I can see what you're looking for. It's the given Chamorro, sing lung. How do we chain it together? How do we break that together? So the old, the current, and then, and then new coming in have a seamless opportunity as well. And that no, give you no see, during one part, no chao left, no chao left behind, he quit that.
As a Chamorro, you know?
Yeah, as a Chamorro, I'm gonna throw it out there.
In your mind, in your heart, and in your soul. Just give me your vision for, you know, for, for this board. How you can take the old, the traditional, how you're going to fight for it and still move forward with progress?
You know, I'm reminded that I spent nine years of my life as the executive director for the Hagana Restoration and Redevelopment Authority. I also knew intimately what the council was when they were doing the restoration and Redevelopment Authority of Charlotte, such a beautiful queen city. I lived there. I knew what that council did. I mean, was I supposed to know that I was going to be Hagana Restoration later? Never in my wild dreams. Did I know I was going to come to something Chamorro, neonayan? I don't dream these things up. And, you know, it's kind of like, I would like to think what my mom thinks. She says, God is calling you.
That's all I have for you, Mr. Joe. I just want to let you know that I look forward to talking, to, 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 for us to coordinate again because I'm the oversight for HRA. And I know we can dig a lot of things that we discussed about in the past. So moving forward, congratulations on your nomination again, and good luck.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Cavill. Senator Perez, you're recognized, ma'am.
Thank you, Chair. Good afternoon, Mr. Cameron. So I guess there are several concerns that I have, you know, before any board member comes before the Tomorrowland Trust Commission. And I just want to ask you, what do you think the primary role of the commission is to, in regards to the mandate?
I'm sorry, hold on. I was diagnosed with an incurable disease, and I lost fifty percent of my hearing aid. But trust me, the medications that were thought not to work are working. Not, I think you're not in a wallow. I'm sorry, can you say that again?
Oh, yeah, maybe I should speak closer to the mic as well. So if I could speak louder, that would help. Is that, can you hear me better?
Very good.
Okay, great. Yeah, just, you know, this, this position is so important, I think, in ensuring that, you know, the mandate is carried out. What is your understanding of the mandate of Tomorrowland Trust?
The original mandate. I want to stick to that. What did Uncle Paul think about it? I want to stick to that. That's first thing. That's why people are screaming. I know that we're talking about leases and all. And you know what? There's a portion of leases for properties which is congruent to the growth of the infrastructure. There's no education that's necessary there. Because we can't dream up and we can't just bring money to the table without money. You can't have, you know, you can't have milk out of a turnip. So sometimes we take our resources and we're very frugal as to how we would promote potential income as a direct result of that shared commonality to make sure that the, the original law is empowered. I, I don't mean to sound so flirtatious in my answers, but.
Okay, so, so what are you saying exactly? Are you saying you want to, can you just, you, you put two things together. So I just want to say, what is the primary mandate of CLTC? And are you going to, how are you going to further that?
I think, like I said, if we bring people to the table, and I, and, and, you know, that's a, a misnomer of sorts, bring people to the table, because some will not come to the table. I, anyway, manak kapu ta pulu, sempie mandakne story tauta. We can't just keep pulling each other's hair and get bold. We just have to be bold and right.
Okay, so are you familiar with the advancements that took place in the last legislature in regards to the Tomorrowland Trust?
How do you, can you rephrase that?
Are you aware of the advancements in law to assist with the Tomorrowland Trust in the last term?
I've looked at several laws. Is there any one particular one that tickles you?
Well, you're talking about financial sustainability. And I'm just saying that there is stuff that has happened in the last term to address that. And are you familiar?
I think you're right. I think the past time that the raceway was and, and that dismay as a result of the last people who took the property, and of course, they minded and. All of a sudden, you know, several months ago, I wasn't even thinking of Tomorrowland Trust. I drove to the back road to Anderson to visit somebody in Zigo, my family. And I said, I'm going to be in Benikiru. I'm just going to be in Oz. And I drove in. That place looks terrible. It almost looks like the Walking Dead. I mean, it's not what it used to be. And I think if there is an honest group out there, an association that really wants to pick that up, I take that over Fentanyl. I take that anytime over Fentanyl. I I I would rather have our people engaged in all these activities. There's a lot of money can be made there, even a fairground in between the times that the raceway is working. It's a meeting place and it's healthy. I think it's quite healthy. So I hope that answers your question as far as what do I support?
So yeah, that those that wasn't the legislation that would provide financial sustainability. But moving on. Do you support the transfer of land out of the Chamorro Land Trust?
That's a very How do I say that kindly? That's a misleading question.
Direct?
I I don't know what you're talking about. Honestly, I don't.
Okay, so you you support the transfer of land outside of the Chamorro Land Trust?
The trust has to be involved in anything of that. So why would the trust not be part of it?
Okay, so moving on to the next question. So one of the laws that we passed was in the budget bill to allow Chamorro Land Trust to get $9 million. You've been a director before. Can you maybe talk about how you ensure appropriations, you receive the appropriations? Or the money that was appropriated to an agency? And in this case it'll be Chamorro Land Trust. How can you assure us that you're going to pursue the appropriations?
Am I hearing you say that there was an appropriation under law for that money already to the Chamorro Land Trust?
Yeah, just my question is how you know, given your experience as a director. Can you explain how you can assure the money is appropriated that you receive as a you know entity? How do you receive that money? How do you make sure that you receive that money?
Well, if you're looking at the administrative regulations of how you take monies and you go to the Bureau of Budget, the Management Research, and then they goes to the Division of Accounts. And then there's modifications as to how the the funds are to be appear as to expenditures. And they call them subject class categories and the manner in which how the General Services Agency. And if it's federal, it goes through the two CFR, the Codes of Federal Regulations. Those those are really serious mandates. That sometimes intertwine agencies as to how they can and cannot expend the dollars. But if this is 100% local funds, but it's gonna marry into like what I hear, then those are duplicative efforts that that will Shanghai you if you don't do the right thing.
Okay, thank you. So one of the things there we had a very successful settlement with Chamorro Land Trust and what how can you assure us that you're going to ensure that Chamorro Land Trust abides by the settlement agreement?
The settle agreement? I kind of looked at that and I I wish I had popcorn to eat with it. I found some novelties in that that are very bittersweet to me. It's like another notch that took away our Chamorro rights. And you know, shut up, you little kid, go to your bedroom, go to sleep. We don't want to hear you again.
Okay, thank you. And then one more question. So you know, we've seen through the history of Chamorro Land Trust so much shenanigans. If I could take a quote from my my colleague here. And I feel like in the last term, we really worked hard to overcome that and we passed really good legislation. To to make sure that Chamorro Land Trust really you know sees their worth. Try try to improve the the value of the the land. I mean, the land is you can't duplicate that here and so the value is just gonna increase over time. And so you know being a nominee, you know, we are looking to members that are going to be able to stand up in you know against special interests that can really take away from this public trust. And you know, I guess really, you know, we've seen commissioners come and go because they have stood up against special interest. And I know you're here today seeking approval for a nominee for your confirmation. And you know, having what you said today about your your desire to be on this commission. And I just wanted to know, are you willing to stand up so much that perhaps you may be terminated at some point because your independence and your ability to stand up for what is right?
I never I never get fired from anybody. I don't expect that the governor will fire me. I don't think so. I do know that the governor is expecting me to to come to the table and posture consensus building. And maybe I'm that little leaf there. I may not have all the knowledge of the realtors and all these financial people. But I do know that the engagement for consensus building is a winner. I don't know how else to define that word.
Okay, thank you for your responses. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you Senator Perez. Mr. Cameron, I think probably my question that I would have for you is again like with Mr. Spisho, what fresh and innovative perspectives would you bring to the Chamorro Land Trust Commission?
The the word Chamorro has been watered down, right Debbie? She left. Well, Kathy, do you think it's been watered down? I think so. Has it been watered down, sir? Chamorro has to be unique. That law was passed and it didn't say English, it didn't say Saudi Arabia. It said Chamorro. What do I bring to the table? Chamorro.
With that being said, in moving forward with ensuring that lands get distributed to our people. Would you be a part of that and sharing that you know the commission works together with the with the the board and the employees and the administrator to ensure that we get this process going and get over these hurdles?
Maybe there's papers there already. It's just that it's not signed. I don't know. I haven't gone in there and Mr. Mr. Investigator, you know, Mr. Spock. I don't plan to be because I've never micromanaged and and you know, I ran eight government Guam departments all at one time with no deputy. I didn't micromanage. I put my trust on my employees. I mean, they're the ones who have the passion, more passion than you and I could ever have. Because they're there. So I think just revisiting if there's any pending documents that are necessitated to move forward. I think that should be the priority, right? And if there's anything lingering from the last legislature, why in God's name is this still lingering, Hitler? Let's get moving.
Definitely, and that's what I like to hear. But thank you for your for being here and accepting the governor's nomination to be on the Chamorro Land Trust Commission
Yes.
Board and we'll be looking forward to having your confirmation.
And and you know, my dear senators, I do say dear because you're all great people. This is not about me and Lulian Guerrero or me and the legislature. It's about us. Let's just be in a consensus where it really does elevate the people of Guam. And I don't necessarily agree with everything that I any governor I've worked for, but I'm able to speak to them about it.
Definitely. Thank you, Mr. Cameron. Now we'll call Mr. Jeremy Rojas to provide for his testimony.
Good afternoon, Vice Speaker Ada and members of the Committee on Land, Environment, Housing, Parks and Infrastructure. Before I start, just want to extend a thanks to the Governor Lieutenant Governor for appointing me to the Chamorro Land Trust Commission. My name is Jeremy Rojas. I'm a lifelong resident of Guam. I'm originally from the village of Assen but now reside in Telefofo with my wonderful wife Teresa, who's with me here today. And our three sons Jeremy, Benjamin and Vincent. I bring to the table with me more than 25 years of management experience. With seven of those being in the government of Guam, specifically with the Guam Housing Corporation and also with the Guam Department of Education. The past 10 years I have spent working in the title insurance and escrow industry. And which is directly related to real estate transactions for those who may not be familiar with the industry. All of which I feel can be beneficial to this CLTC. I stand ready to lend my land title and real estate expertise to work with the administrator and the other commission members to help the CLTC achieve its mandates and I look forward to serving our island in that capacity. I'd like to thank you all for having me here today and I'm open to answer any questions you may have for me.
Thank you, Mr. Rojas. I'll go ahead and start off the panel with my Vice Chair Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, you have any questions?
Sido Smasi, Mr. Chairman. And Jeremy, I was pleased to see your nomination. Having served with you. I really have had a front row seat to your integrity and your work ethic. And just the kind of person that you are. So I'm glad for your appointment.
Thank you.
You know, I'm just gonna go down the similar line of questions that I had with Mr. Spisho and and of course, Mr. Cameron. Bottom line is is that speak to once again your not only your experience at Guam Housing Corporation. But your experience in terms of how and having to navigate not only the financial side of the house and ensuring that people can qualify for loans and and realize that dream of building but also just the intergovernmental operations. And are you willing, like I said once again, to to make sure that the board seeks to get that memorandum of agreement and understanding between all of the land agencies so that you can clear up any deficiencies to make things move quicker?
I I absolutely would support that. You know, having worked in the government and knowing how difficult it can be when agencies that need to work together can't or don't. I I see that it's absolutely necessary for us to find common ground and find ways to work together for the benefit of the people. So I'd absolutely work to with obviously I'd have to work with the administrator and the other board members to find a way to make that happen. But I'd absolutely support doing that.
Jeremy, I want you to once again reiterate, you know, your experience also Guam Housing Corporation. I mean possibly more of a lack of you know capital. But aside from that, being the being the primary lender capable of financing. My experience and I know this was yours, but I want for the public to understand is Guam Housing Corporation stands ready to move forward and get these things moving and and really it's not the impossible dream. It's a matter of getting all the paperwork in line. And making sure that there's funds availability. Can you just speak to that? Because I think to me, that's gonna be you know, one of the one of the key roles that you can play. Just because of the fact that a lot of directors, yes, do change and we talked about that, but there's still a lot of people with institutional knowledge. Land management particularly, you know, that when asked and when called upon. If you if you look at the CLTC and you look at you know land management, I mean 80% of the titles are just pasted over. Because they're the same they're the same job really in terms of the duties and responsibilities. So can you speak to that just so people can understand more of how you can help facilitate that?
Yeah, so I do understand that Guam Housing is the only financial or the the only lender that can finance CLTC properties. And I can absolutely understand where you're coming from. I I've seen firsthand leases or potential leases where people can where someone ready to build couldn't do it because a property wasn't registered. And and you know, in looking into it, they the the potential less C had to work with the government to find a way to get the government to actually register the property. I've also seen some other administrative issues where heirs are trying to get or you know avail of the property that belonged to their to their parents and there there's paperwork they need to go through. There there's waiting periods in order to get availability of the property to be able to use it. So there's I I can see some blockades just just from my personal experience talking to people that that are trying to get their their land trust properties moving. But yeah, with regard to financing, I I know that there is the USDA programs, the the veteran programs and also Guam Housing, there there's funding available there which is limited. And I I'd absolutely support trying to find a way to to make sure that through the actions of the board, we can make that process easier for everyone.
Thanks, Jeremy. I just you know, I I feel as though you have that you know, I know you know, even in the current you know position that you hold and 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 what you're doing now, you you see these issues coming up all the time on title and research and surveys and registering and everything else. And I just really I look forward to you bringing that expertise with the other team members and getting in there. And like I said, once again, the the nuts and bolts of the operation. And and I want to make this clear, this is not for a lack of the other board members also trying to tackle this. It's just that when I hear the issues coming forward from the entities that are trying to you know push this forward. You know, you you can see that there's there really clearly is a lack of intergovernmental work and also just basically that that synergy. So I I just hope that I think everything is there to make things move. It's just coordination, collaboration and getting things done. And that's why I'm excited about those of you who are coming through that you know on a daily basis. This is what you do. Because if you don't, you don't have a company. You don't have a job. You don't and I'm not trying to put the issue of the of the commercial and the business side on it. What I'm saying is that the the ethic and the efficacy that being on a board, you know, you you gotta move as the way you move. You know, in 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 your day to day operations of understanding all things real estate and all things that go into that transaction. Yes, Chamorro Land Trust is unique. Yes, it is designed for our people. Yes, it is designed to get these subdivisions moving and the like. But the mechanics are the same. The purpose is is a special entity purpose, but the mechanics are the same. And that's why I continue to be you know excited about these appointments and I and I believe that you know that you can bring bring forward that 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 action item and that action plan to move forward. So I look forward to the discussion on your nomination in committee. And I have a lot of confidence in Jeremy. So thanks for coming forward today.
Thank you as well.
Thank you, Vice Chair Duñez. Senator Trelahy, you're recognized ma'am.
Sido Smasi, thank you, Mr. Rojas, for your testimony and for being willing to serve. With all the nominees today, I just you know, I I realized, like I said earlier, that you all are people of integrity. You're all very good at the work that you have done. I just actually don't think it's the integrity or the skills or the motivation of the recent commissioners or our new commissioners that's really going to make the difference here because we have had some of the most motivated commissioners in the history of the Chamorro Land Trust recently and some of those have been terminated. We have had much movement in the Chamorro Land Trust because of these commissioners and they have been terminated. So that motivation to move it is not necessarily always going to be in the commissioner's hands. They're what I think is really causing the delays, as I said earlier, there's a long list from the past. But the current delays continue to be caused by the agenda of the commissioners being detracted to take care of other pet projects for other people. To take care of other government projects to take it's a political will thing. It's whether they are willing and willing and able to prioritize getting these residential leases out. leases out, and to do that, they've made a plan, and are they willing to follow the plan? Of course, it's so obvious, there's technical things to do. Register the land, that used to not be a problem, there used to be an excellent working relationship between the Attorney General and the Chamor Land Trust Commission, but revolving directors, these things change. Register the property, of course, survey the property. Again, they used to work together with land management when they had an MOU for surveying the properties, that was not a big issue. But it could, you know, it needs to be improved, but now, I mean, all of these things are the, you know, making the leases technical, we don't need technical skills in how to write a lease, we've got the Attorney General involved writing the leases, it's really a matter of directors and commissioners following the plan, following the law, making sure they follow the law, that they make a lease in the order that they're supposed to make the lease, and all of those things that we talked about earlier, what that were audited, found to be corrupt or wrong, and now that they're moving, they are actually moving to try to fix those things, and very disturbed by the turnover of the people who are doing the moving. So I do hope that when, if you get on the commission, that you are willing to continue their work. We had a federal lawsuit, and it was thanks to Pika Farin, the former chairperson of this commission, that this trust survived that lawsuit. They were saying it was unconstitutional, she took great effort to ensure that this trust survived and that it is perpetuated, and that the eligibility criteria were actually expanded, and they added on to the intent of Paul Bordalio and made it better, made it secure for all of the beneficiaries. And so there's really no reason for the delay when it comes to processing the beneficiaries either. They've made the efforts, these commissioners, to move Guam Housing to review. And, right, when the typhoon happened, then it came that even though the legislature put money to guarantee home loan funds or home loans, couldn't move on some of these applicants because of other technical issues. But again, I just feel like those have to be done by directors, right? You commissioners are not going to do those things, the directors are going to do it. So this question, I keep asking you, are you committed to hiring your own director or are you subject to the will of the governors to hire the director? Because the statute says, you commissioners hire your director. So which is it going to be? Because I'm not getting very firm answers by some of the nominees.
If it's mandated by the law, I mean, I'm one to always follow the law. So if it's mandated by law, obviously, I'll review the mandates and I'd follow the law.
Are you willing to prioritize residential leases above new commercial leases while we've got 8,000 people who had applied since 1995?
You know, I'd like to commit to that, but looking, you know, right now, I'm looking from the outside in. I'd like to take the time to get in there and see what's going on and find, you know, look at the solutions that will work to make those things move along.
Are you able to withstand the pressure from special interests that want to use the property of the Chamor Land Trust and to move that land out of the inventory, such as government of Guam, agencies such as private agencies, such as sports enthusiasts?
I've never been a yes man, so again, I'd like to, I'd review everything that's put before us and make the decision that's best for the CLTC, the best for the people.
Thank you. My time is up, according to the chair, so sí, señor presidente, Mr. Ross. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Cholai. Senator Guita, you're recognized, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and Jeremy, stepping up to serve is a big deal, and kudos to you for, in what's happening with the Chamor Land Trust Commission, that you're willing to do this. So kudos to you for stepping up, and especially under such times. I'm probably going to repeat it, I mean, I think it's worth me saying it over and over again, is going back to the idea of priority. And so I know that you have to say it, and I've worked with you, and I know you're not a yes man, so let me just go and ask, can you, without saying yes to me, but at least in terms of prioritizing at least one subdivision using funds, and to try to at least do it the right way, if you will, can you work with the other agencies, water, power, get these leases, or sorry, get these properties recorded, and can we see at least over the next two years with you or yourself on the board, and your experience, by the way, can we see at least one subdivision? Do you think it's possible to get one subdivision done in 24 months?
I am certainly willing to give it a try. Again, you know, it's, I'm looking from the outside in at this point, definitely willing to get in there and take a look, and, you know, obviously, I can't walk in there and I won't have a magic wand to change stuff, but I'm willing to work with my counterparts to see what we can do to make it happen.
Thank you for that, Jeremy. Then also, just from a credibility point of view, I mean, these people have been sitting on a list for a little bit a while, no question. I think there's people that would like to do different work with the land trust, no question. How do you bring back that credibility, you and the board? Obviously, there is an executive director that needs to be hired, I mean, I'm sure that's going to be another task in itself that was talked about throughout the afternoon, but how do you bring back that credibility to this organization that's really suffered immensely?
I think that's something that the board, the administrator, I mean, the entire organization as a team would have to do. We have to work together, make changes administratively or through assistance with the legislature, if necessary, but we'd have to work together to restore that faith in the commission, and that would be through our actions and making changes that actually bring benefit to the people that we serve.
Well, again, thank you for stepping up, and you're not shy about wanting to do this, I think this is your testament to be here with your wife, and being here to listen to all this, there's a lot of things happening, Jeremy, so kudos to you again, and look forward to discussing your nomination to the CLTC on the floor of the legislature. Thanks again for being here today.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Guita. Senator Barnett, you're recognized, sir.
Sí, señor presidente, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Ross, for your testimony. I guess I just want to first ask, where do you feel the Chamor Land Trust falls into place relative to dealing with the housing crisis that our people are facing?
You know, I think it offers a unique opportunity for people who qualify to get the leases, dealing with real estate transactions on a daily basis. I see it firsthand, I see people that are on the verge of closing their loan, who can't of, you know, who can, who end up not being able to buy their house or the house that they're wanting to because of a shift in the interest rate, you know, or something that happens in their life that changes their debt-to-income ratio. So, you know, being able to get a 99-year lease at such a low cost and having the mechanism through Guam, the Guam Housing Corporation, or even through USDA, it presents a great opportunity for our people that aren't able to get regular financing or that have opportunity to lease CLTC property. It'll actually allow our people who qualify to build homes and realize that dream where they otherwise couldn't, and we see that, I know people in Hawaii who have just been like outpriced, you know, priced out of the market. It's happening here on Guam, too, our, you know, houses here are just, they're just so expensive in comparison to years past, and it doesn't help with the high interest rates we're seeing now. So the CLTC actually absolutely plays a great role in helping our local people.
What is your opinion on the legislative interference into the Chamor Land Trust Commission's operations? And I'll just kind of provide a little background, I know that some of here have talked about the credibility of the Chamor Land Trust Commission, but I think the situation we're in most recently is we had commissioners who were trying to do their due diligence to ensure that the Land Trust Commission got somewhere in the ballpark of fair market value so that we can generate revenue and then turn that revenue into infrastructure so that we get our people on to lots with infrastructure so that we can, you know, make a dent in this affordable housing crisis. But instead, what we've had is incessant legislative interference, when you have commissioners who are trying to get a fair deal for the beneficiaries, here comes the senators with, hey, Parry, can you introduce this for me and, you know, open this racetrack or give away a E-Paw pointer? And like I said earlier, we already have five bills before this legislature that seek to take inventory out of the Chamor Land Trust Commission. So I guess my question is, who do you think has the credibility issue? And just what are your thoughts on the legislative interference? Do you think the legislature has a place in involving itself in what should be kind of the mandates and the duties of the commission?
I, you know, from my understanding of the perspective, or, you know, for the duties of a commission member, I mean, we're charged with executing the mandates that are passed by law through the legislature. I think, you know, that the board and the, or the commission and the legislature should collaborate, but, you know, I'm not, I prefer to reserve comment, I'm not as well... I guess I'd have to read more into exactly what's been happening. I understand some of the stuff I've heard in the news, but, you know, I'm not really, I don't think I'm educated enough on everything that's been going on, I haven't read any of the bills that have come before the legislature to, I guess, make a comment on that right now.
But, Sir Ross, if you have kind of a basic understanding, and that obviously seems like you do, of what the CLTC is about, it's almost what I said earlier, you know, if we have the legislature dipping their hand into these lands and trying to do these shenanigans and hookups, which oftentimes are for, you know, they're not trying to do a lucrative lease, you know, they're trying to do a giveaway. So I guess, let me rephrase the question, in your opinion, does that type of interference from the legislature contradict the mandates of the trust that you are going to be charged with delivering, should we confirm you?
It could possibly, but, you know, I think as a board, as a commission, we'll have an opportunity to review those things and be able to, as a board, make an opinion and share and do our best to, you know, make a decision and an opinion publicly that is in the best interest of the CLTC.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Sí, señor presidente, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Barnett. Senator Perez, ma'am, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good afternoon, Mr. Ross. I just, I have a couple of questions, and my first question is, why did you accept this nomination?
Well, I'm glad you asked that question. You know, it's kind of interesting, before I got the call to asking me to serve on the board, I was actually discussing with my wife that I'd like at some point to get back into public service, so this was a, this came shortly after, so I... I'm happy at the opportunity to give back. I've worked in public service before, and I found it satisfying, although this is in a different capacity, I'm looking forward to doing something that can actually help our community.
Okay, so having said that, how familiar are you with the history of Chamor Land Trust and all the issues that have besieged it over the many years?
Again, I know what I see in the news, I do know that there was a lawsuit in the past with regard to, I believe a gentleman was wanting to be considered Chamor, even though it wasn't within the mandate of the law. But, I mean, for the most part, my understanding is the mandate of the organization of the CLTC to ensure that our native Chamoros have access to the, our ancestral lands or our native lands.
Okay, so how quickly will you learn a lot of this? Because, you know, this is a lot has happened, and especially, there's a lot of laws that have been passed most recently that has shifted the functionality of Chamor Land Trust Commission. And, you know, how quick are you a learner in learning all of this? And I think most importantly, too, is the principles that, you know, when you're making judgment calls on this commission, what are the guiding principles in making these decisions?
Well, the guiding principles for me would be following the mandate to make sure that the agents, that the commission meets or fulfills the purpose for which it was created.
Which is what?
To ensure that our local, you know, our native Chamoros get, are able to access the lands that are, I guess, that are rightfully theirs. But as far as learning the, what's necessary for me to function, I think I'm a pretty quick study. It's, you know, being where I work right now, I have, I read a lot, it's a reading intense business that I'm in, so I feel I can bring myself up to speed fairly quickly.
Have you attended these meetings, the Chamor Land Trust Commission meetings, before?
No, I have not, but I understand that they can get pretty intense and take pretty long.
Yes, that is very true. And you are a general manager of a company, do you have the time to dedicate that, to learn and to be really supportive of the Chamor Land Trust Commission?
My, the owners of the company I work for are supportive of my nomination, I've already discussed with them that I may need to take extended periods of time for board meetings and other CLTC-related issues, so I think I will be able to make the time for that.
And do you see a conflict of interest with the company that you're working for and with being a commission member?
You know, the nature of my business, of the business I'm in, is being a neutral third party, so I don't really see a conflict. If there's ever a time where there is a conflict, I would recuse myself.
So your company will not gain financially from being on this commission?
I don't believe so. I will say that, you know, according to the laws that regulate the business that I'm in, the customers are the ones who choose to work with us, so it's actually part of the Real Estate Settlement Procedures Act. But, yeah, I don't, I don't see my company benefiting directly from my membership in the commission.
Do you believe that land should be transferred out of the Chamor Land Trust?
You know, without additional information, I, you know, I'd like to, with a situation like that, I'd like to look, you know, review all of the, all of the facts related to it. I do believe that the CLTC has the properties it has for a reason. If some, if any properties were to be proposed to be transferred out, I'd like to take a good, long look at it and, you know, know the facts and, you know, what's, I just, I know, just get to know all the information that's necessary to make a good decision. That's obviously within the letter of the law.
In the news, there was a bill that was going to extend the lease for a solo farm, for solo farm to be in operation. What is your understanding of that situation? Were you in support of that, or did you, or otherwise?
I don't know too much more than what I've read in the news on that. So, I mean, I'd, you know, in regard to power itself, though, I will say, at the time I've seen that in the news, I will say that anything that increases the megawatt capacity of GPA is something that's welcome, especially when the power is going out. But, you know, as far as like knowing the... But I, you know, as far as like, knowing the, you know, everything, you know, all the facts surrounding that, so, you know, that, that particular issue, I'd have to, I'd like to, I guess, review it more to understand what's going on before making a a comment as to whether I support it or not.
So if it's a commercial lease, what are your considerations that you will look, look at? If you're making a determination on something, what are your considerations as a member of Chamorlan Trust Commission?
Well, if it's a commercial lease, I guess we'd be looking at the property, the the potential income, and how it serves the, the ultimate how it serves the people that the CLTC is meant or created to serve.
Okay, the other question I have, so Chamorlan Trust, so the settlement basically really emphasized that the Chamorlan Trust is a land restoration program. And so what can you tell us that will assure us that if we should confirm you as a member, what can you assure, what can you say to assure us that you will protect this trust? And the mandate, and to ensure that the settlement agreement is upheld?
You know, I guess, I think everyone that knows me knows that I, I knows my integrity, and knows that I would, you know, I follow the law in everything I do. So with regard to the CLTC, things would be no different. I'd make sure that whatever it is we do is within the letter of the law and to the benefit of the organization.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rojas, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Perez. Mr. Rojas, just one of my questions. What, what also would you, fresh new perspectives that you would be bringing to the Land Trust Commission?
You know, the, the commission, you know, it has its mandate, and, you know, I think the, the heart of the, of that mandate is something that's, you know, need, you know, should always stay intact. But I do believe, you know, as a, as a commission, we should look at ways to, I guess, improve things, make them more efficient, use technology to improve what it is we do for our constituents. So, I mean, I, I think in that way, that those are areas that I'd, I'd like to look at, to see how we could improve our services.
Yeah, I think also moving the, the commission forward, right, and ensuring that the, the land trust recipients are able to get their properties. When we hear this December 1995 time, and then where are we at today in 2025? It's just really unacceptable that, you know, we still have so many people waiting, and with yourself and the two other nominees, I hope that you guys would be able to continue to work with the board, with the Madam Chair, Ms. Bordalio, and the other members, and, you know, the staff at the commission, to ensure that we continue to move forward. I mean, is anything ever perfect? Absolutely not. But I truly believe that as long as we try to work together for the benefit of our people and our island, I think that we can make strides. Is it going to happen overnight? Absolutely not. But I think that working at it and chipping it away, we'd be able to make some progress. And I hope that that progress starts immediately when, should you, the three of you get confirmed. And I think a lot of reading up and seeing where we're at with different issues on the land trust, I think it will give you guys a better understanding of what's going on in the commission at this point, and how would you guys would be able to help move it forward. But with that, so the other testimonies that we had in support of Fabrine Cruz Respecho was Ms. Stacy McDonnell Flores, Michelle Perez, and also submitting written testament, testimony for Fabrine was Liz Duñez, John Duñez, Christopher Felix, Claire Delgado, and of course, Mr. Jake Cruz, all the way from Tennessee. For Mr. Joseph Artero Cameron, Mr. John Cruz also was in support of your nomination, Mr. William Kando, Ms. Lolita Titano, Patricia Titano, and Stacy McDonnell Flores as well. And also submitting written testimony was the Honorable Judy Wampat, Talyn Titano, Simeon Palomo, Rosie Blas, Mary Okada, Mercy Munya, Manuel Duñez II, Michael Borja, Mamie Bolajaya, Lolita Titano, Madame Mayor Louise Rivera, Liz Duñez, John Duñez, Frankie Shizaki, Fred Horreki, Franklin Ariola, Eduardo Calvo, David Sablon, Deborah Bellinger, Carlo Leon Guerriero, Catherine Cruz, Anthony Babata, Jake Cruz, Mark Duñez, Nathaniel Berg, and Lou Bohato. The only, the, for Mr. Rojas, we had Mr. Earl Garrido, Joseph Cameron, Teresa Rojas, Dominique Rose Felix Leon Guerriero, and Mrs. Arlene Bordalio. And in opposition to all three nominees was Mrs. Debbie Conacton. And with that, I'd like to thank all of you for being here today. This will conclude this afternoon's confirmation hearing. The committee will continue to accept written statements on today's hearing within seven days from today, which may be mailed to my office on the second floor of the Guam Congress Building at 163 Chalan Satupapa in Hagatna. You may also send your statements to us at Vice Speaker Tony Ada at guamlegislator.gov. Thank you all for your participation. This confirmation hearing is adjourned, and the time is 5:34 PM. Thank you, everyone, for being here. Thank you to my colleagues as well.
Thank you.